Good morning, everyone. Oh. Regular feedback issues? Are we okay now? Yep, perfect. Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm councillor Chris Pedengill, acting mayor for the month of November. Chair in today's committee at a whole for Tuesday, November 9th. How I'm squalling, Chris, look, no matter, la, school, oh, miss, oh, mail. Welcome to the Squamish Nation Unseated and Traditional Territory. Can I start with motion to adopt the agenda? Councillor French, Mayor Elliot Seconds, anyone opposed? That carries. Thank you. And we don't have to do all those. Are we doing the policy thing still? Oh, nice. Okay, I will turn it over to Mr. Pageley to introduce Mr. Dextra and Staff Sergeant Bradley for a presentation from the RCMP.
Good morning, Mayor and councillor. It's my pleasure and honour to introduce Inspector Dexter and Staff Sergeant Gareth Bradley to present the RCMP three-year strategic plan. Further ado, I turn it over to Inspector Dexter.
Thank you very much. Just wait for the presentation to load here and then we'll get going. All right, that's thumbs up. We're good to go. Good morning, Mary Elliot and councillors. Thank you for having the RCMP here first on the agenda this morning. As noted, I'm looking forward to presenting the Sea Disguise RCMP Strategic Plan for 2021 to 2024. First, just a little bit of an introduction. There's been some changes, obviously, over the last six or so months related to our senior management. So I just wanted to provide some information related to how our senior management team is made up currently. I came into the RCMP here in Sea Disguise in April as the new inspector in charge. And in relation to my senior management team, I have three other people that are very important to the day-to-day workings of the RCMP and our operations. First is PSC Amanda Daly, who's our administrative manager for Sea Disguise. My North Zone Commander is Staff Sergeant Sasha Banks, who was just promoted to Staff Sergeant there this last week. And you all know Staff Sergeant Gareth Bradley, who's a mainstay in the Squamish area. This is the team that I rely on the most in relation to making decisions about what we do, how we do business, and actually providing the services on a day-to-day basis in Sea Disguise. Another really important group of people that you may or may not know, but have also a huge role in the delivery of services are our main NCOs and our senior PSEs in the organisation. So in the North Zone, we have an operations NCO, who's an acting sergeant Nathan Miller, and then Corporal Scott Landry covering Pemberton. On the Whistler administrative side, we have PSC Shandra Hope. South Zone, you will probably be more familiar with these names. Sergeant Dan Pollack, who is the operations NCO for Squamish. And then we have Corporal Adam Coe from Bowen Island. In the Squamish side, we have PSC Kimberly LeBrence. And then on our general investigation side, we have Sergeant Jeff Shore. These are the second tier people that have a huge implication in terms of how we deliver services in Sea Disguise. And I thought it was important to recognise their names and to pass them on so everybody's aware of who they are. Regarding the strategic plan, this one was done differently than in previous years. In previous years, there were some conversations between different people and stakeholders in order to get information about what it is that they wanted from the RCMP. This year was, because of COVID, turned out to be actually a more of a collaborative process than would be expected. It included input from the Sea Disguise management team, internal stakeholders, external stakeholders, and the public through a survey that was sent out. This was great. I was just told the number, but something of 500 separate responses from the public were included in the development of this plan. So we could get ideas, thoughts about what it is that the public was looking from the RCMP as well, which makes the most sense, given that we're there to support them. In addition, taking into account crime analyst reports and other criminal information to help us determine what our priorities should be. Obviously, as it says here, you know, our plan is prepared and guided by local, regional, provincial, national policing priorities as well. Priorities are set at the national level, at the provincial level, and then at the local level as well. We have to take into account those priorities when we talk about what it is our priorities as the Sea Disguise RCMP is going to be. This plan is going to go until the end of 2024, and I say federal end of 2024, which is March, with the fiscal year being April 1 to March 31st. And obviously, as we go through, we're presenting this plan to different groups, including a presentation we already did with the RMOW. We're going to be presenting it to all of our stakeholders, just so everybody's aware what our priorities are going to be going forward for the next few years. Part of this was coming up with a revised mission and vision for Sea Disguise RCMP. Took us some time to kind of weed through what we thought it would be. And our mission, I think, reflects who we see ourselves as a policing organisation, providing services to the District of Squamish and through Sea Disguise as a whole. It's important here, I just want to read it out because I think it's important to state, in partnership with its diverse communities, preserve and promote public safety, uphold the law, and provide effective and compassionate policing services throughout the Sea Disguise corridor. Seems pretty straightforward, but us throwing the word compassion in there is one of the visions that I am having for Sea Disguise in particular as a way we want to be delivering policing services. So I want to focus on that. What do I mean by compassionate policing? I think for me compassionate policing is just a recognition that we are here to serve the public. We're here to serve the citizens of District of Squamish and the rest of the Sea Disguise. And in order to do that effectively, we have to put ourselves as much as possible into the shoes and the lives of the people that we're serving so that we can not just enforce the law, but understand what people are going through and try to provide our services in a way that supports them, their growth and their development. Yes, we're going to have to arrest people. Yes, we're going to have to charge people with crimes. Yes, we're going to have to enforce various traffic laws, but we can do this in a compassionate, friendly and caring way. It's not about giving people a hard time. It's about trying to help them through their troubles. And so in terms of a vision, we build on to this mission piece with a bit more detail. The Sea Disguise RCMP is a healthy, inclusive and collaborative organisation trusted by the public. It serves its partners and its employees. It consistently delivers exceptional policing services aligned with the needs and priorities of its diverse communities, ensuring transparency, accountability, inclusiveness and integrity, and responds to all requests for service with assistance, sorry, for service and assistance with compassion and professionalism. This expands a bit further on our overall mission. This is where I want the organisation to be. This is where I want us to go. This is where we want to be as we move forward to the next three years. If we can meet all of those points in our vision, then I can say that we've been very successful as an organisation in providing policing services. Again, you'll note key words, accountability, inclusiveness, integrity, responding to calls for service and assistance with compassion and professionalism. These are really highlight points for me and where a lot of my time and energy is going to be focused on. I'll skip through this pretty quickly, guiding principles and priorities in context. Obviously, when you're doing a strategic plan, you're taking into account a bunch of information, as we talked about, information from our stakeholders, information from our partners, information from the public, in order to get a clear understanding of what it is that people see us as, what they see us doing, and how we can help them. Obviously, there's lots of contexts and challenges that when we're doing a strategic plan, we have to consider. We have to consider the geography and the social diversity. We have to take into account changing metrics like population growth and tourism. We have to consider emergency disaster response. COVID-19 has been a huge component of how we've had to look at delivery of our services. And obviously, with the change that we've noticed, especially through COVID, the focus on mental health, wellness and safety, not only for our members, but for the public that we serve. These are key challenges and items that we need to be thinking about as we go forward. So this is where we start to get into what are our strategic priorities? Well, we have five. So we have these five pillars that we've come up with this year. Crime reduction and prevention and community safety. Enhancing public safety and road safety. Operational excellence and emergency preparedness. Partner for social impact. And employee excellence and workplace culture. These are the five main target areas that are going to be foundational to the services that we deliver over the next three years. And the lens in which we're going to be looking at our activities, and they have to fit in these different pillars, and they have to be consistent with our mission and our vision. Otherwise, they're not going to be priorities for us as we go forward. I'm just going to briefly go through the main components and pillars. So crime reduction, prevention and community safety. This is a pretty standard one in most policing strategic plans. I would think that if you didn't have crime reduction and community safety as one of your pillars, you weren't doing policing. But in terms of how we do it, we're going to continue to provide excellent policing services to our community, but with some additional focuses for the next few years. The focus on intelligent-led policing is huge. Intelligence-led policing has been a huge component of RCMP policing activities and priorities for years. It's one of those things that people put their heads around and try to figure out what does this actually mean? Well, actually, it just basically means using information from the community and trends from criminal activity and behaviours to inform how we do our policing services. Makes sense. It's not always been the easiest thing to do, however. The gathering of intelligence can be a bit of a challenge. So one of the things that we're looking for in terms of intelligence-led policing is working with our partners in the development and creation of a Sea Disguise Criminal Analyst position, serving both the North and South Zone. This will be a critical position, which is going to help us over time in the understanding of the crime trends in our communities and help us focus our activities to the most efficient and effective way of doing business. Database for prolific chronic offenders, and there'll be some other elements that will come out of our intelligence-led policing, but this is the key point for intelligence-led policing. One of the things we're looking at doing in the next few years is the development of some proactive units and implementing those in terms of being more proactive in our policing efforts as opposed to just reactive. You know, we receive calls for service. We respond to those calls for service. We lay charges. We don't lay charges. We help people. That's reactive policing. It's a core to what we do. However, in order to be really truly effective, we have to be more proactive, and this is where we're hoping to move ourselves over the next few years. One of these elements is the looking at the creation of a community response unit. This is a combined team, which is a mixture of our community enforcement teams, our community outreach teams, and some teams that would be able to target key activities in the community in a proactive way based on the need. So example, working with doing bike patrols in the downtown area. Or if we notice that there's a particular traffic issue, we can enhance basically a response to a particular issue as it comes up and deal with it that way. It's not, you know, one item and that's it. It deals with the big issues of the day as they come to our attention. And then we get out there and actively try to address issues to prevent them from becoming worse or to address the problem of the day. Other things that we're working on, we continue to work on a bait bike program vehicle, but potentially moving this into the back country hotspots. This is something that came from the public. We know so we do have a lot of break-ins in vehicles in the back country roads and the forest service roads. So this is a way for us to be able to deal with those issues. Looking at implementing an amissable patron programme, mostly in Whistler. We have gang members from the Lower Mainland coming up to vacation in Whistler. This is a programme which is effective in the Lower Mainland, and we're looking at introducing that in Whistler. Looking at some more joint patrols with our combined forces, special enforcement units. And again, as here, particular downtown beat patrol programme, we'll have officers out invisible, riding bikes or walking around downtown, just getting to know the people, seeing the members walking around proactively can sometimes also prevent things from happening. That's one of the things we're hoping to work on. Preventative and assistance initiatives. So again, getting more involved in some of the restorative justice model. Right now, there is a pilot project happening here in Squamish with North Van. It's working very well. We're hoping to expand that to cover all of Sea Disguise. Obviously, with a compassionate type policing approach to things, restorative justice becomes a huge component of that, and we'd like to be using it on a more proactive basis. We don't always need to, you know, charge people. We don't always need to send people through the court system. A lot of times, we can deal with things, even serious crimes through restorative justice, and I'd like to see us doing more of this. Again, more youth and public education initiatives. Investigative standards. This is something that's really important for policing, so we want to be increasing and improving the way we deal with our Crown. This helps with our packages which go to court, improves the improves the the quality of those reports so that we're giving Crown what they need to be able to move things forward through the court system. And training our members in investigative standards, especially, it says here, with property and violent crime. These are the key types of things that are happening in our communities right now, property crime and violent crime. If we can increase the ability of our members to be able to investigate these types of activities more effectively, we'll be better and more effective at at meeting the needs and standards of our communities that they want. This is kind of the key initiatives that we're looking at. We're not looking at doing all these things in the first year. This is a three-year plan. We're hoping to move forward on all these initiatives over the next three years. Enhancing public safety and road safety. This continues to be an ongoing issue for Sea Disguise as a whole, especially with the Sea Disguise Highway. I think we've noticed a decrease in the number of vehicle accidents and fatalities, but as far as I'm concerned, one fatality on the roads is one too many. So road safety and public safety continues to be an important focus for us. So with respect to some enforcement initiatives, continued focus on speed and destructive driving enforcement, focusing on our frontline for documenting and being more effective in our traffic enforcement. There's also a project in place where we're going to be looking at warning book, where we can hand out warnings to people. You know, warning sometimes is just as effective as a ticket. Just getting pulled over can be a stressful stressful time for somebody, where we can issue warnings. This is an important thing we can be doing. Equipment procurement is a huge piece for this as well. We're looking at, over the next few years, picking up some automatic licence, licence plate readers. This will make us more efficient in identifying vehicles that are driving by that don't have, are registered or are expired, and sometimes tie us to vehicles where maybe we have a prolific offender in that vehicle. We're looking at getting another boat in the South Zone. Right now, we have a boat that kind of serves both the South and the North. But obviously, there's a lot of coastline and a lot of activities that we could be doing on a regular basis in the South, particularly with a boat. So this is something we're going to try to look at building a business case for. Intelligence-led traffic work. Again, when we talk about intelligence-led policing, our traffic work also has to be intelligence-led. When we're looking at where do we focus our efforts, you know, randomly choosing spots just because they're there, it's not effective. It's better for us to be able to understand the data, know where our accidents are occurring, or know where our tickets are being given, and then to spend more of our time in those areas, trying to get control over traffic flow and negative driving trends. Additionally, in our enhancing public safety, rural backcountry partnership policing is really important. We're seeing a lot more tourism happening in this area and people moving into the backcountry, so we want to be a little bit more engaged in what's going on in the backcountry, especially during tourism season. So developing and establishing our partnerships, especially when it comes to seasonal policing and the weekends. I know this is an issue that's been raised. Seasonal policing has been raised a number of times at a higher level, and we're going to continue to work with council here, but also with the RCMP as a whole to try to get more funding for seasonal policing so that we can increase the amount of work that we can do in these key times. Communication strategy. Again, I think we need to be a bit more active, a bit more out there in the communication side of things, letting people know when we're doing good things, letting people know when we're successful, and letting people know what we're doing related to road safety. What are the types of pieces of information that we can be communicating out? One of the things that we were looking at was getting some signage created for high collision zones. We do have signs that talk about reduce your speed and such, but if we notice that, you know, the majority of our accidents are happening in a particular area on the highway, you know, maybe we can put signs up that say high collision zone, gives another, I guess, another identifier for people that are travelling through the area to realise that maybe they should control their speed or slow down. There's lots of different things we can do, but we need to definitely be more active in social media and getting more media releases out in terms of what we're doing and in relation to tips and tricks for safety on the roads. Operational excellence with respect to emergency preparedness. This one's, you know, near and dear to the heart of Staff Sergeant Bradley here. He, I think this is his baby. He's got a real experience and expertise in this area and lots of partnerships with our search and rescue and other emergency preparedness partners. This is really big because the RCMP members in general, we're not search and rescue personnel, but there's becoming a greater number of search and rescue issues, callouts happening, and so we need to be prepared to assist as much as we can. So in relation to this area, emergency operation procedures for all detachments is huge. Getting our members trained in relation to the incident command system in terms of managing major critical events. With search and rescue in particular, we had floods, we're going to have fires, there's all these things that are happening. We need to be prepared to do an effective policing response. Tabletop exercises is a really critical component of this. This is where you can do a lot of learning in a safe environment. You don't have to wait for something to happen. You can sit down, come up with a scenario, having a conversation with your group about how we would deal with it, and if we incorporate our partners into these conversations, we all know what we're going to do when the real thing comes. Backcountry adventure policing, so getting more equipment and training for our members so that we can go out and assist. One of the things that Staff Sergeant Banks has said a number of different times, and I think you've said it as well, is we need to police the way our community looks. Well, our community looks like adventure people going out into the backcountry, enjoying all the wonderful things that the community and the backcountry has to offer, so we need to be able to police in this manner as well. So our members need to be trained in some of these techniques. Having some liaisons, sorry, liaisons for our North and South Zone, and getting some equipment procured to help us to be more effective in this area. Partner for social impact is the new addition to this year. The other ones are similar to previous plans, but partner for social impact is a huge one. Obviously, there's been some significant changes in Canadian society over the last few years, recognition of some tragic events in the past. The RCMP has a role in some of those things that have happened. We recognise where the organisation needs to do better, and as a society, we need to do better. Well, we want to be a partner in improving. So we want to be more accessible to the public. So one of the things that we're going to be moving forward on is actually having public town halls, not just internal public, sorry, town halls with our members to find out what's going on with them. I'd like to actively be engaged in doing town halls with the public so they can see us and they can ask questions and engage with us directly. Having open houses, getting more open, providing more of an opportunity for people to come in and see us and start to recognise and see us as people, police officers, but people as well. And engaging with the community, especially the youth in particular, and doing some more bike rodeos, youth camps. If we can get engaged with youth at an early age, it takes the stigma out of dealing with the police, but it also allows us to have conversations with them and provide guidance, advice, mentorship at an early age. Partnership work engagement, working with the Integrated First Nations Unit and working with our partner agencies becomes a critical component in terms of us being a better partner for social change. Working on mental health initiatives, so something that's been very popular, has been talked about across the country. It's happening in different areas, looking at being more engaged, working with our mental health folks so that they can be partners with us in the delivery of some of our policing services. You know, sometimes a mental, well, in most cases, mental health calls don't need a police response, they need a mental health response. We can engage and work with our social workers and other medical personnel to be there to provide safety, but to allow the professionals to do what it is they do best. So the CAR67 and those types of initiatives are things that we would like to be working with. In addition, making sure our members are well-trained in relation to critical incident debriefs and mental health. Again, this compassionate style policing component that I'm referring to, part of that comes with awareness and being aware of the challenges that people go through. Being more aware of it, it changes the way in which you respond. And of course, I think probably the most important is our Indigenous truth and reconciliation initiatives, reconciliation initiatives. This is a huge thing for me. I think we all recognise, especially this year with the residential schools and all the truths that have been coming out of that have been distressing, to say the least. We have a huge role in helping people heal. And because of the role the organisation took in the early days in the 50s with the SCOOP and with the residential schools and so on and so forth, as police officers, we have a significant role to play in helping people heal through that. Generational trauma is real. I think people don't really understand what it means, but obviously, if someone goes through a major trauma, that gets passed on to their children, which gets passed on to their children. The only way we can make it better is to try and break that cycle, and I think we have an important role to play in that. So in this case here, in the District of Squamish area, we have a lot of really good relationships with the First Nations community. And some of our initiatives will be, you know, a bit more use of our Little Thunderbird canoe, which is a fabulous, fabulous event, and engaging with local First Nations and the youth. Member training in relation to various First Nations and activities, trauma-informed policing and training. And again, that compassionate style policing, engaging people in our members so that they can be better at delivering policing services to this community. And employee excellence and workplace culture. This, for me, is kind of a glue piece, which kind of you'll see as it goes through all the different initiatives. If we don't have an excellent workplace culture and we don't support our employees, then we can't really be effective at the other activities that we're looking at. I take this particular initiative on myself, and it includes a number of initiatives. Initiatives around health and wellness, initiatives around investigative training with our members to make them better at their jobs and more effective, taking care of our members through yearly check-ins, performance standards and excellence, awarding our members for good work. I've often said that our members in any given year do 10 to 15 things that would be worthy of recognition for bravery, and we don't do a good enough job and recognise our members for the work that they do. This is something that I'd like to be a bit better at. 360 surveys are huge. I need to know what I'm doing well and what I'm not doing well, as much as our members do and our NCO, so engaging in those types of things. Plus, internal town halls, getting possible committees evolved so we can understand some of their thoughts and some more communication surveys. That at a very high level is the strategic plan for 2021-24. I'm very happy with the plan that we have. We've been receiving quite a bit of positive feedback from it. Now it's going to be up to us to actually implement it, and we will be ensuring that we report back to council, you know, through regular channels in terms of how we're doing. Also, working with the CAO, general manager, in different types of initiatives that we'll be looking at to try and meet some of the objectives. And that's, that's all I have. So I wanted to go through it quickly to offer as much time for questions and answers as possible. So thank you very much.
And thank you, councillor. Any questions? Mayor Elliot?
Thank you for the overview. In the operational context bullet points, one thing I didn't see was the update of the Police Act in BC, and I wonder how that may or may not impact this plan going forward.
I'm not really, I don't know if I had a good answer for you on that one. Obviously, if the Police Act is updated, we'll have to take a good look at that and see how it impacts. I think our initiatives and our plans and our ideas are broad enough and appropriate in terms of what we want to see as a police force. I don't think that would have much impact. We're still going to be looking at being a partner for social change. We're still going to be looking at operational excellence. We're still going to be looking at emergency preparedness response type activities. So I don't think that that would change our approach very much at all.
And then you mentioned joint work patrols with a few acronyms there, which I don't remember offhand. But could you speak a little bit more about that and so what that would look like and if that costs us money? Because we're using a different team that we might have to pay for.
Yeah, absolutely. Joint patrols are really about bringing in people that are experts from outside the area and to assist us. So for example, in Whistler, we know that there is a bit of a gang issue. It's not as big, I think, as people maybe think it is, but it still does exist. So it's important for us to bring in our combined forces units that have expertise related to gang enforcement. Part of that is about educating our members so that our members, when they're on patrol, they're getting information and training and learning from these members so they know what are the warning signs, what are the things that we can look for. I would see us doing more of that as a partnership patrol in Whistler than we would be down here. But down here, working with the Integrated First Nations Unit and doing joint patrols with them, that makes more sense. Again, it's an opportunity for us to be out there with experts who know more about this type of policing and can teach our members, but also can help us engage with those communities. That's what it'd look like. I don't see this costing any money. These units have budgets for this type of work, and we would just bring them up to assist us in these types of initiatives.
The other thing that caught my eye was the need for ATVs, sleds, bikes, and this idea that we need to police how people use this area. But I'm curious about how much of that is taking place within the District of Squamish boundaries and how much of that is actually outside of our boundaries and maybe not our jurisdiction to procure equipment for and police? So how do we manage that going forward?
Absolutely. With respect to District of Squamish itself, I know that there's a lot of work that goes on into the community in the outside because we do have some provincial positions. Obviously, purchases for provincial-type policing will come from provincial budgets, not from a District of Squamish budget. This is also part of the presentation. It's a common presentation we use for North and South Zones. So there's some elements here that apply more to the North Zone with Whistler and Pemberton than it does down here. That is to say, we definitely would be looking at trying to get some ATVs and sleds, but this would be more on the provincial side of things. It's policing that community as much as we police District of Squamish.
Just one more question. You spoke about trauma-informed policing and training. And so does that get developed at a local level in the context of the First Nations you're working with in this region? Or is that a provincial or a federal sort of standard education?
I see it as all three, to be honest with you. So the RCP has instituted trauma-inforced policing courses that are mandatory for our members to take. It's not an optional course. Members are required to take these training courses, which teaches them about the foundation pieces related to how do you deal with people who have gone through such extraordinary trauma? It does apply to First Nations trauma, but it can also apply to other people that have gone through the other different trauma as well. That's the first layer. Obviously, at that point, the next layer would be engaging with our communities and working to engage with our local First Nations to have, it's not really in training as much as engaging with our First Nations folks that we can get to learn their story and get to learn what they've been through on a firsthand basis so that we can then police that community more effectively. So I see it at all three levels, not just standardized online training. It has to be in person as well, and that's part of the overall plan.
I'll go to Counselor Race and then Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. So this is, as you're probably aware, this is our budget time, and we try to develop, excuse me, a five-year plan. And I'm just wondering, you didn't really state it in your presentation, but do you have any projections or desires in numbers of members from where we are today for the next few years?
We definitely do have some numbers in mind. We're working closely with the CAO and the General Manager to kind of firm up that information so we can make sure that what we're asking for, what we're going to be looking at asking for is appropriate based on the levels of service that the community wants, but also the increases in activity that are happening here specifically in District of Squamish. I know that we're looking at an order of magnitude, but I'd rather just spend some more time with that group there. But I guarantee that probably by the end of next year, we'll have a pretty solid idea of exactly what we're looking for.
And along that line, in the past, I've seen presentations where we've been presented with statistics on number of files per member, for example, criminal code files per member. And without getting into the detailed numbers, can you, in a couple of sentences, are we trending one way or the other in any particular area?
Yes, District of Squamish in particular, we're trending up in both numbers of calls for service, numbers of calls for service per member. And the violent crime index has also gone up in the past year. So the type of crime, the nature of the crime, the complexity of the crime, the violence of the crime and the volume are all going up in the area. One of the things that we're looking at shortly is the creation of a crime analysis position. The whole point of this is so that we have someone who can really get into that information in more detail for us on a regular basis to help us understand exactly what the trends are and to help us determine exactly what our needs are going to be now and also in the future as we go forward. But definitely, there's been a spike in increase in the number of calls for service and the level of crime.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, then Counselor French.
Thank you. Inspector Dextra, I don't recall seeing a presentation with so many acronyms, and I won't be taking time to ask about all of them, but there were certainly quite a few. I'd like to ask about your relationships with community organizations that is fostering community self-organizing for safety and protection. And I'll refer to three, and I didn't note them, first of all, Crime Stoppers. I don't, I may have missed it, but I wondered whether you may comment on their role and as an example of a community organization that might be a part of your strategic plan, and it probably is highlighted under other phrasing. I'll also mention Neighborhood Watch. In Valley Cliff, I'm aware that there has been initiative to implement a Neighborhood Watch program, and that may be going on elsewhere. And I'll mention a third thing as well related, and that is social media. In my neighborhood and adjacent neighborhood and I know of others, there are neighborhood Facebook groups. And one of the things that comes up quite a bit are people passing information to each other, alerting as to suspicious vehicles driving around, poking into carports, this sort of thing. So I wonder if you might be able to comment on those three things, to the extent they're relevant in the context of your strategic plan? Crime Stoppers, Neighborhood Watch, and new media for helping out.
Yeah, I'll do my best. In relation to Crime Stoppers, it's not specifically mentioned in the strategic plan because we have an ongoing relationship with Crime Stoppers. It's something that has been part of our organization for a very long time, and we're just going to continue to do that. In terms of advertising it, I think we can maybe do a bit of a better job in terms of getting that information out there, reminding people that if there are tips, if they do see something, it's important to say something, and they can do so anonymously through Crime Stoppers. So that'd be part of our communication strategy as well. I like Crime Stoppers tips because they are, they're often very good, accurate information because people feel comfortable telling their story. And so, yeah, that would be something to be part of what we do. In terms of Neighborhood Watch, I think it's not specifically mentioned, but we're always open working with any local organization, especially a Neighborhood Watch group. If they wanted to implement something, we'd be more than happy to work with them and provide support, advice, guidance in terms of how that could work, develop those relationships, contacts, so that if there are issues, concerns that come up, they can actively come in and see us or contacts that they can reach us, and we can give a hand. This is the kind of thing that we're very much open to. Community relationships are extremely important. I'm still getting to develop mine, but I know Staff Sergeant Bradley has a number of solid community relationships. And so if anybody had something specific, I'm more than happy to see them come to detachment and have a conversation and see how we can help them. In relation to social media, this is an area where we need to improve. We do have a Twitter, we do have a Facebook account. We're trying to be more active in terms of its use. But I do know that especially younger generation people are using social media now as a way of reporting things. I think that there are some things, actions, activities that are underway, thoughts about how we can use that as a tool for reporting crime. I don't have anything specific about it, but I agree with you, we need to be more engaged in that. As an example, I know that when we had the active shooter or the active shooter incident that happened a month or so ago, rather than getting onto a media release, our communications person sent out a tweet and a Facebook post. And I think within minutes, it, I think we had something like 21,000 hits or something related to that information. That became probably the most effective way to share information very quickly early on when we weren't 100% sure what we were, what we were getting into. Also, we do have an online crime reporting portal. So people can report online criminal activity that is going on in the community. Now, right now, I would obviously advise that if you're having something that's violent, something that's ongoing, something that needs an immediate 911 response, then you should call 911. But if you have, you know, something happened to your property, someone banged your car, you don't know who it is, you want to report a theft, something that happened, you can do this online. And our members are getting that information and responding to those calls for service that way as well. So that's another way that we're encouraging people to use an online presence to report to the police.
Counselor French, and then Counselor Herford.
Thank you. Thanks for being here today, and thanks for the sharing of the strategic plan. One of the bullet points indicated that a CISM team would be formed, and I'd like to know a little bit more about that. What is it?
This is actually the specialty of Staff Sergeant Bradley. I'm going to let him speak on that one if that's okay here.
Your microphone's not coming through. And just turn the other one off.
All right. Yes, that sounds a lot better. Yeah, it's critical incident and stress management, which is very important for our teams to be able to come together and speak about their emotional trauma, what they experience. You know, we have a different type of job. We see a lot of traumatic incidents in the corridor through crashes and extreme events that we go to. So we have to be able to look after our team and implement psychologists to come in and be able to take care of our members' health and wellbeing so they have a long and healthy career. So that's part of my position is to make sure the oversight of that is being kept up.
Great, thank you. And I'm just also interested in hearing a little bit more about youth interaction. You mentioned youth camps and bike rodeos. I'm specifically wondering about school liaison program. Is that still something that happens, like regular drop-ins at schools by a dedicated member? So like, an individual member has a relationship with each individual school. Does that program still exist?
Yes. So we've had to duck, dodge, and dive a little bit over the last little while. I mean, COVID really changed the way we were able to interact with the youth and actually ended up having to be just some online stuff. So I know that when COVID came into play originally, our SOAT, or Squamish Outreach Investigative Team was conducting some interactions with the kids through online means. But online is great, but in-person is better. And now that we're slowly moving into a period where we're hopefully going to be moving away from this pandemic, we've assigned officers for the purposes of going to the schools on a regular basis to drop in and meet with the kids and to work with the principals and other leadership of the schools to find out what it is that they are looking for and to be able to come up with programming that's going to be suitable for each of the schools. This is something that we started discussing before the school year started because we wanted to make this a focus. The challenge has been with various issues happening within the RCP, with people being off-duty sick and other people being away on long-term leave. We've had to reinforce the frontline with some of those members. So while we don't have, say, a dedicated person, one person that's doing this job, each of the watches themselves have been assigned responsibility for different schools, and they're actively engaging with the leadership in those schools to figure out what they want. And that's going to lead to programming such as the, it's an X no, or bike rodeos, or school talks about subjects that are important for the kids. It's happening in Pemberton, it's happening in Whistler, it's definitely happening here in Squamish as well. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, and Counselor Herford.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in and giving us this presentation today. I was happy to see the heading of Mental Health, and I was curious, under that heading, it said, I think it was CAR-67, and I believe the acronym was slash PACT. And I was just curious if you could fill us in a little bit on what that program is or could be.
Yeah, this is the program which involves a joint patrol involving a mental health worker and an RCP officer. So where you have a call involving a mental health situation, not necessarily a police call, we do get a lot of wellness checks. And so where it appears that it's a mental health one, it's a call that would be responded to by both the police and the mental health worker. In that case, when you get to the call, the mental health worker takes the lead. It's not a police call. We're there to make sure that everybody's safe. The health worker does their thing. We're there to intervene if things need to be intervened from a public safety perspective. But it allows a professional who has the skills and experience to deal with mental health issues to actually deal with the mental health issues that go with that. That's something that's been working in different parts of the country. They've been, they've been trying, those pilot projects have been highly successful. I know that the province has been looking at different alternatives to this. There, you know, we've been in Saskatchewan, I think it was Saskatchewan. There was some discussion about having mental health nurses attached to the Operational Communication Center, that's the dispatch center, and having those workers in play, in place with the dispatchers so that they can call up specific information and maybe try to de-escalate or intervene over the phone. That's a different approach. We're looking at the direct approach of having, having a mental health nurse or social worker with us. I know there's been some discussion with coastal health up in the Whistler side, and they seem supportive of it. We just have to try to figure out how to make that program work, the funding side of it, and how often it can be employed because just like the police and other public agencies, health is also short-staffed, so we have to figure out how best to make that work. But that's what that program is.
Thank you, and I guess I'll use that one just as a, to sort of maybe as context for the rest of it. The strategic plan spans some time, so I'm curious first for, we can use that one, or if that one's incredibly difficult, maybe we can use another one. Like, where do these things fit in the sort of order of, order of operations, I suppose?
As a manager, I want to try to get some quick, successful hits first to prove that what we're doing is, is working. So we're going to take the path of least resistance probably for the rest of this year just because we're, it took us a while to get the plan implemented. You're going to work on things that we know we can be successful at initially, improve the success of our plan. Some of these things like that are going to take negotiations, they're going to take time to work with. I know that we reached out to Vancouver Coastal Health. They were immediately genuine in terms of they wanted to do it. They were kind of looking at us to figure out, when can we do this? How can we do this? But it all comes down to resourcing and availability of resources. So I wouldn't expect to see that program off the ground until maybe a pilot version of it next year. Some of those things are happening right now, some of the activities that we're doing right now with the youth initiatives. We're starting that process with, you know, getting more engaged in the school again now that we're through, I don't, I'm not fully through, but hoping to say we're fully through COVID. So, yeah, there'll be, there'll be a variety in terms of how these things are implemented. The crime analysis is one we're hoping to look at before the end of next year, having that implemented. Again, that's a resource and a staffing issue as much as anything. So the true effectiveness of that might, won't be until it gets online, but it's going to take some time. Maybe what I can do is come back to council and present to you kind of what we're looking at for later, more in the year, once we've had a chance to kind of figure out maybe the flow of each of those different types of initiatives. Let me share that with you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions, so I'd like to thank you very much for the presentation. Very glad to see the, personally, the responsiveness to the public feedback and paying attention to a lot of the discussions that are going on nationwide right now and glad to see attention to those things. So thank you very much and looking forward to see this rollout.
Thank you, and just again, thank you very much to council for your ongoing support, for everything. You've been great and looking forward to continued working with you and making things better here. So thank you.
Thanks. Counselor, we are on schedule, so we'll take a four-minute break to 9:55 and let staff get online, and we'll see you shortly. Okay, welcome back, everyone. And we are now on to the Solid Waste Utility Bylaw and Tickling Bylaws Amendment, and I will hand it over to Ms. White and Mr. Wint.
Thank you. Is that okay? All right, thanks. Good morning, Mayor and Council. For those viewing in, my name is Shannon White, and I'm the Integrated Solid Waste Specialist at the District of Squamish. And I'm here today with my colleague Jeff Wint, the Outreach Sustainability Coordinator. And we are here to talk about the proposed Solid Waste Utility Bylaw and the Notice Enforcement Bylaw Amendment. So without further ado, just a very brief overview, today we'll be talking about, or just giving an overview of the Contamination Remediation Plan that the District of Squamish has put together and will be launching, as well as the overview of the proposed bylaws. As well as, we have a couple slides at the end where we'd like to discuss items that came up or questions that came up during the September council presentation when our team came before council. So, and then, of course, there's extra time for questions. So really quickly, I'd like to dive into our curbside recycling and the related contamination that we're finding in the system and the Contamination Remediation Plan that has been required by Recycle BC. On the screen is a graph. I just want to clarify there, it's not 100% accurate. it's, it's not 100% accurate. Unfortunately, it's actually not a comparison with similar systems. The gray line in the graph in front of you is the provincial average of curbside recycling. So that could be single, single stream automatic totes, but it also could be a system where they have more, a little bit more individual totes, different items. But what it does give you, the red is the District of Squamish's results from our different audits. And you can see, for some reason, this information comes from Recycle BC. For some reason, they haven't connected the 17.2%. That's kind of near the top there in quarter two of 2020. What I did want to bring forward is that, so the item, the material that Recycle BC has asked the District of Squamish to focus on, that we're seeing high levels of contamination, is the District of Squamish is currently, and I'm going to give you some percentages, is at 10.7% contamination. So that's not accepted materials. Here, the provincial curbside program, that averages 6.7%. But the comparison piece of what is a similar system is 9%. So we're actually not that far from similar systems. Their average. However, we are supposed to be down at 3%. So still 10% is substantially over 3%. That being said, I'd like to say that we used to be at around 16%. So we've gone down to 10%. And so we've demonstrated that there's been a continual effort in the community. And, and if we put in the effort and communications and kind of the legwork to, to inform our residents what can and can't go in the curbside collection totes, then we can see improvement. So just a very brief overview of the Contamination Remediation Plan. The reason it's being implemented is because of these high levels of contamination. It's required by Recycle BC, who's contracted with our curbside recycling. We have one year to reduce our contamination levels, and the focus is on that, that item that I mentioned, the not accepted materials. So paper products, books, metal, garbage. And here's a few pictures from Recycle BC audits, as well as our curbside collection tune-ups that you see on the, on the pictures here. So in, when we came before council in September, September 21st, we gave an overview of the Contamination Remediation Plan, or the CRP, as we like to call it. And there's these different components, promotion, education, monitoring, training, enforcement, and tracking. That being said, today, what I'd like to focus on is the monitoring and enforcement pieces. And, and the reason why is because these speak to the, the changes in the Solid Waste Utility Bylaw. And one thing that I would like to highlight is that all of these elements, our team does not see as, as separate components. Through our work, they're highly interlinked. So promotion and education are informed by monitoring, also help inform the monitoring, et cetera, et cetera. So these are all, the, the plan shows them as separate, but we see them as speaking to each other. I'm, I'm not going to dive into this too much. If, if there's someone on council would like me to come back to this, I can. Essentially, we have several monitoring types, the Recycle BC audits, the lid lift checks, and the curbside tune-up. And all of these audits provide us with valuable information and trends on contamination. Each one, we see as a different form of feedback to us and also to the residents. And they all lend different kind of levels of information back to us. So they provide residents also with direct and clear feedback on the recycling and contamination. The progressive enforcement strategy is really a component of the CRP that is, the intent is to give this direct feedback even more so on, on residents or households. And the goal is ultimately to educate and not to get to the fine level, although there is a fine component of the strategy. And as I mentioned in the earlier slides, that is supported through the monitoring components of the CRP. So just to give a little bit of an example, a little bit more information on the progressive enforcement strategy. So there's these four, it's four steps. And the first step is really, it's identified by the collection driver, auditor, or district staff. And an oops tag is left on there, on the, on the tote. And there, it won't include information on the fine. It'll say, you know, you have, we see that you have left some books in your tote. Books are not allowed in our recycling bins. And that will be directly on the tote. Again, then each step gets a little bit more comprehensive. So step two is, again, the people who will be identifying and our auditors or do you, do you, district of square staff, they'll get the tag and a postcard. Because every single tote has a serial number that's linked to a household address, that's the communication feedback. Apologies, I touched the mic. So that's where there will be a link to the resident. And then as step three, there'll be the tag and then a warning letter that will talk about the fine, potential for fine. And then step four will be the issuing of a ticket. I want to provide, it's very simple, quick visual on the progressive enforcement strategy. So the idea is, there will be a lot of residents or households receiving the oops tag, will revisit the same houses, will see, will hopefully see a progress and change. And so then the kind of the funnel gets narrow, 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 until we've visited the same house four times in a row, and we still see significant levels of contamination. That's when the fines issue. So it's, it's really this kind of funnel or upside-down pyramid shape. And at the beginning, we will be focusing on kind of heavy contamination hotspots. So we have a bit of data to back that up on which areas we should be kind of focus our efforts in. Because, for resource management. So just an example of the oops tag, as it's in almost all of the steps, is, it is essentially what we use in our curbside tune-ups. The wording will be adjusted a little bit, but what is important about this is that there's a big space on it where the person can write the, the auditor or the district of Squamish staff can write what they saw. So it's not just an anonymous kind of tag saying there's contamination. It can say, there is, you know, glass, or there are books. And, and so hopefully that's a feedback directly to the resident to change their behavior. There's also going to be the contact information, a phone number and an email. And the phone number will go directly to my colleague Jeff here, who will be able to really walk residents through what can and can't be accepted in the program. And research has shown at other communities, being able to have that one-on-one contact with the residents who are very concerned does see behavior change. So I'm just going to go into a little bit of an overview of the, the bylaw. So this is the Solid Waste Utility Bylaw. It is, we're proposing a new bylaw because there are so many slight adjustments. It would be a repeal and replace. So I, what I'm going to do is walk through some of the, the bigger changes. There are some smaller administrative changes, numbering, grammar, et cetera, that I'm happy to talk about. But I'll walk through some of the kind of the bigger revisions. They are, there's kind of, we've, the changes are based on three buckets, the progressive enforcement strategy to, so to support staff in this progressive enforcement work, as well as addressing offensive behavior, helping support the staff at the landfill in particular, and then some general housekeeping items that have come up in our kind of review of the bylaw that need to be addressed. So the ones related, the changes related to the enforcement strategy. So there's some definitions that have been tweaked. Really, we wanted to clarify contamination. Who does that apply to? What, what does that mean exactly? In our previous bylaw, we had commercial businesses lumped with folks with curbside collection. So we kind of divided those because they don't apply, they're not the same type of contamination materials. So that's, there's some definition work. At the landfill, we've started using the term banned materials. That came forward also to council in the fees and charges by law update with the 2022 tipping fee charges. What we found is that by using the term mixed waste fee, people were under the assumption that it was okay and allowed, whereas we actually really want to signal to customers that we don't want those materials. So therefore you are having a higher charge. And those are not accepted. There's a few authority definitions clarified. And then we also did a bit of work on which properties receive collection and not. As well as, under the progressive enforcement strategy piece, we wanted to make sure that if a driver came across or an auditor came across a grossly contaminated tote, they were supported by the bylaw to, to leave that tote at the curbside. So that's what excusable collection is. I'm kind of briefly going over these very quickly. Happy to dive in if, if council would prefer after, in the question part. Again, as I mentioned, we're looking at clarifying which properties have centralized collection and what recyclables we, the District of Squamish expects to see at centralized collection. Like in an apartment building, what they should have versus what somebody in the curbside collection program has. And then again, to reflect that, we had to update the schedule around recyclable materials. Hand-in-hand with this, we also are bringing forward the Notice Enforcement Bylaw to be amended. And so we are looking at Section 4.7D, in particular, that is related to the progressive enforcement strategy. So previously, the penalty for failing to put the appropriate materials in the right bin or collection container was $500. And there was no opportunity for a reduced penalty. So now, staff knowing that this is something that we potentially could be issuing, we reflected on, we did research on what other, other communities are doing for the, this penalty piece, fine piece. And also, what, what do we feel is reflective of the offense that would be committed, right? $500 is a lot, and we do not, that's not where we want to land. So in the research, we found that other municipalities were putting their fines between, I believe it was $50 or $75 to 250. So we, we landed at 100 in our work. And then also, we added the ability to, as I said, work with somebody who receives the fine to reduce that by 50%. So they can do some compliance measures if they get the fine. So those are the changes that are related to the, sorry, working on my technology and trying to talk at the same time is a little beyond my skill set, apparently. The other part is that there's, I mentioned, there's a few other revisions in the proposed bylaw, the Solid Waste Utility Bylaw, that are not related necessarily with the solid progressive enforcement strategy. We have added a littering component. There was no clause in none of our bylaws before that was really addressed littering. So that is now added. Again, that contamination piece between curbside collection, ICI properties, and then as well as this ability to discontinue curbside collection. So what this is, is that the District of Squamish has in our bylaw that we will offer curbside collection to all multifamily home strata complexes, like duplexes and townhomes. That being said, in our OCP, it does not support individual totes for over three units. So what we wanted to do was harmonize, because the previous Solid Waste Utility Bylaw was done before the OCP was amended. So we wanted to kind of harmonize that, as well as address the ability, if there was a complex where there was concerns about safety for the, the residents and, and with the garbage trucks and recycling trucks going through, obviously, District of Squamish staff would work with that site and, and the collection contractor to resolve the issue. But if we're unable to resolve it, now there's an element in the bylaw that says we can discontinue curbside collection in that complex now needs to move on to centralized collection. As well, there previously was, in the Solid Waste Utility Bylaw, several clauses around exemptions for tipping fees, and they were, two out of the three were for community cleanups. So if you're doing pitch-in week or a community cleanup, you were exempted. Plus, natural resource officers were also exempted. However, staff have, in, upon review, removed that natural resource officer exemption, largely because District of Squamish, all of our departments are pay at the landfill as customers. So it was unclear why we would subsidize natural resource officers when we don't even subsidize our internal departments. As well as, we add an exemption to support the demolition and diversion bylaw. So people who are customers who are, need to weigh, they no longer have to pay the weighing fee at the landfill. As well, sometimes there are, there are odd requests for exemptions for land, paying landfill tipping fees. So there's now a clause in there saying, as long it's, it's reasonable, doesn't fit into kind of the current other circumstances in that clause, as well as it doesn't benefit one business over another or provide a financial or benefit to one business over another. And it has to be approved by a higher level authority. There is this now kind of ability to do that. And we, we'd get odd things like, for example, when there was the fire at the port, we took the, the posts that, that were burnt at the landfill, and we waived those tipping fees. So there's kind of like these weird one-offs that happen once in a while. This is, the intention is not to use this regularly. And the last piece is the, the, the not following site rules or inappropriate behavior. So this supports the, the employees on site. You know, we have a zero tolerance for inappropriate offensive behavior at the site. However, there have been times when we have encountered that. And recognizing that the staff there are not District of Squamish staff, they are contracted, we still want to support them and be able to have a, a safe and respectful environment at the landfill for them. So this allows them to kind of say, okay, you have not, you're not following our rules, you can leave the site. And this is supported with a policy for the staff on site. So it's very clear and not subjective. So that's a high overview of the bylaw changes. As I said, happy to jump in. I just want, I have a couple slides from questions that came up last time. Perhaps this is a good time to pause, I'm wondering, and just check in with Chair. Maybe I should answer the bylaw questions right now, and then bring up the other two points, slides, or should I just continue through? Right. Okay, thank you. So these are just very high level. During the September council meeting, we, there were some questions on the collection system, what we could influence and change. And so I just want to really provide an overview. It's a very high level. It's not in-depth collection system about our, our system and kind of the spheres of influence. So our collection system, and when I say collection system, I'm really talking about recyclables. I'm not talking about garbage in this instance. So our collection system consists of several different elements. So there's, there's recycling that's on our properties, the District of Squamish property. So we get to choose what we want to put on our property. Do we want to recycle, you know, glass or concrete or cardboard or carpet or whatever? And so we, we kind of pay that, or we, we organize that. There's recycling at private companies. So for example, ASM Metals, they take metal. Cardinal Concrete takes concrete. So there's kind of these private recycling, recycling opportunities. There's our curbside recycling, which we've been talking about. And then there's this EPR sphere, which Recycle BC falls in. And you kind of, what happens is, these extended producer responsibilities, so EPR programs, they are responsible for finding, developing their collection sites in a municipality. So Recycle BC works with London Drugs and Queensway, and they've decided those are two sites in Squamish. London Drugs also now, they also take light bulbs, which is a different program. Triton takes used oil, Cal Tire takes tires. It's kind of this, definitely a hodgepodge of a collection system. That being said, to jump to that depot location point is, when we look at this, we look at what's our sphere of influence. And And out of those four points, we, the District of Squamish really has a sphere of influence only over what's on our land. We can't regulate the private businesses requiring them to take more. The EPR programs are responsible for what where their products for finding their depot sites. And then the, sorry, and we're responsible for the curbside collection. So the depot hours, Recycle BC has these two depots, London Drugs and GFL. We have explored extending the author, the hours with GFL. However, we can't require them. And we've looked into it and staff have have connected with them. But we can't, there's, we don't have the authority to require it. I get, and likewise with locations, we can't require more setups. We have asked, what we have done and staff is looking into is is looking at, you know, the most used programs, which are beverage containers and Recycle BC. And we've, we've started exploring, can we add additional sites in Squamish? So that's work that's been on done right at this point in time. And then as well, to kind of add and support the system and also to address the contamination issues, we are, and it's in the 2022 budget, is to do a glass, glass collection points in different neighborhoods pilot. That's a very brief overview and discussion of collection systems, and I'm happy to dive in. Sorry, I don't have a beautiful map or anything, but this is where we're at. This being said, is that in 2022, we do have these two, they're, they're very much too separate, but they will be done probably hand in hand. Public engagement opportunities around waste management and zero waste and recycling in the community. And one is around the lateral expansion of the landfill. We need to do an amendment to the SLRD Solid Waste Management Plan, which requires consultation. As well as when we do our zero waste strategy update next year, both of these will have a lot of public engagement. So we, we want to reach out to the community and talk about, you know, needs and opportunities and see like what, what, what are residents looking for and what, how, how else can we help them? That being, and that hand in hand with that is that in 2023, we will be doing a review of the collection system in Squamish through the lenses of wildlife equity and accessibility. And then intent is the work in 2022 will help inform the work that's done in 2023 as well. So that's the kind of, those will be speaking to each other. That all being said, staff comes forward with a recommendation that the District of Squamish received, the report of the Committee of Hold dated November 9, 2021, on the proposed solid waste utility and regulation bylaw number 2870 2021, and the notice informer's bylaw number 2022, 2418, that's not how you say it, 2018 amendment bylaw number 2869 2021, for information prior to considering the bylaws for reading. So intent is to come back on November 16th to the regular for the three readings of the bylaws based on council's feedback today. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Go to Counsel Reese.
Thank you. I guess this is part question, part comment. Couple of weeks ago, in the, in the local newspaper, there was a publication which set out the various types of materials that you could recycle, which I thought was great, actually. I mean, I try to pay attention to that, but it seems from a layperson's perspective that that field is expanding and changing from time to time, and it's a little hard to keep up. And, and so I looked at something like that and found a couple of things that I didn't know could be recycled. And my question, I guess, is related to that. For me, it was such a sort of a handy tool. Have we thought about producing something like that, that is more convenient, that could be just pinned to the side of a fridge or something like that? And periodically, you know, I know you wouldn't do it biweekly dates, but maybe annually updated if there are significant changes, because that, I think, is a very helpful reference for a lot of people or could be. And so I guess it's partly question, partly comment on that.
Through the chair. Yes, the what goes where guide is close to our hearts. I'm glad, I'm happy to hear that you found it useful and interesting. The intent is that that is to be cut out or glued to walls. Right now, that piece is on a two-year publication. And, and we co-publish it with GFL. They share the cost of it with us. We are, we will be having, we're, we will be publishing kind of smaller versions and putting them at the landfill here and kind of places all over town that we can make it useful. That being said, we can definitely take it back and look into our budget about producing it annually in some form. It's, it's a very helpful tool. Thank you.
And I, I wasn't thinking necessarily annually, it would be more keeping up with changes, significant changes. And, and if there are continuing changes, then maybe annually is appropriate and in some cases, maybe not.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Counsel Anderson and then Mayor Elliott.
My, my first question for staff is in regards to section 818, the revised section exemption of tipping fees. There is an emphasis, and I'm reading eight 18A and B to a registered participant in a pitch in week initiative and a person or participant in a district approved community cleanup program. There is a lot of cleanup activity that takes place by individuals and groups that are outside of events or programs. Illegal camps being cleaned up, repair in zone cleanup, illegal dumping. I have had a member of the community who is well known for doing cleanups, especially illegal dumping, and happens to have some specialized equipment for this and was rather frustrated that they showed up at the landfill and were going to have to pay tipping fees. So my question is whether there is some room under section D that is discretion of the landfill manager in such cases, because it seems a little bit restrictive. A lot of people are out there helping us clean up the community outside of organized events. Do you have some advice? Should they, should they phone in advance, that sort of thing? Because the, there's, there's a lot of cleanup that goes outside of registered or approved events. Related to that, a lot of our illegal dumping is on crown land. And I note that under that, there's been, one of the revisions is to remove the clause whereby a natural resource officer who is bringing in material from a local community cleanup is exempt. They're not, they would no longer be exempt. So my general question is, community cleanups and the new implications under section 818 as you revised.
Through the chair. Thank you. So first I'll address your first question, comment around individuals or or groups participating in non-registered community cleanups. So thank you for raising that, that we will work to kind of revise this. Because currently there are individuals who are regular community cleanup citizens, shall I call them in our community, and they do have waived tip fees because we see it as community cleanup and we know that they are providing a service to the community. That being said, we have been working to kind of develop an internal procedure to make it easier. We don't want people to be hung up on bureaucratic process. And so the staff are actively working on on something that will make it more convenient for for folks who are doing something outside of pitch in week. So that being said, there is, there, we do put in the clause that things have to be approved by the manager so that it's, it doesn't become a subjective thing at the, at the scale, right? Oh, so and so is my neighbor. We, we do want things to be going through a proper process, but we want to make it easy. So that's, um, that's, for example, if there's a school that is doing it outside of pitch in week. That being said, sorry, and the second thing about the natural resource officer and illegal dumping. So I, I, I really appreciate this feedback. I think it's something that we do need to take back and review. And I mean, Chris Britham, the Director of Engineering is also tuning in, so he might have something to add to this. I'll let him virtually chime in. Sorry, I look around because I'm not sure. But it was removed largely just because our bylaw department is doing community cleanups. Our public works is going around doing kind of cleaning up garbage in the ditches. And they are not being, having free tipping fees. So what we did is we think that this is something that needs to be looked at further and deeper. And at the same time, why are we, why is the District of Squamish subsidizing one group externally and not internally? So this is kind of the piece was removed, so we can kind of review it and give it a look, look at it more fuller. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and I, I would just add to that, the, because this is a utility, it sort of has a, you know, there's a literal bare fence around the landfill. There's also a financial fence around the landfill. And so the utility is responsible for its own costs. And so we, we shouldn't think of it as, oh, but it's all, it's all us. It's not all us. It's the utility. It's a separate animal, so to speak. And, and so that's why we, why we make sure that internal departments and and external department or external agencies do help to cover the costs of landfill.
Thank you. Chair, I do have a second question, if I may. This is with regard to the progressive enforcement strategy and our methods of monitoring totes and and owners of totes and how this may evolve in future. Back about very nearly four years ago, the district undertook a smart city grant application initiative, and it was focused on new technology in waste management. And there is reference to so tote serial numbers. And I'm wondering whether the few, we may be thinking in future or expecting future to be involved with barcodes or some other tagging system. I note that the staff report refers to collaboration with the IT department to ensure that Tempest can be utilized as a database. But can we look forward to new technology to monitor and communicate with tote and tote owner users? Surely, monitoring is a cost. We'd rather have that investment moved to education and other, other elements of the whole program.
Through the chair. So just to confirm, the question is, are we looking into external technologies to help with the tote management and?
Yes, I wonder whether we're looking into it or not, but whether we can expect this and whether it's easier than the driver getting out of the truck or or with some kind of a barn zone or electronic system? Are other jurisdictions looking to implement such a thing? Curious. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. So I'll start and then please Jeff, jump in if I miss anything. So the District of Squamish has considered RFID tags, which is kind of the common thing used to, to technology to to tag electronically totes with their owners. And then they can also speak to the trucks. In our last curbside collection contract negotiations, we did ask for pricing as well for, you know, to, to be put as an option to have our totes tagged with RFID tags. That information that came up during those, that curbside collection contract showed staff that to implement the technology, there's a significant cost. And at this point in time, it is not clear to staff whether that cost outweighs the the benefits outweigh that cost, right? So there is a significant cost to retrofit essentially every single tote with a tag and do kind of all the administrative work around it. That being said, we do know that there are communities that are also executing these contamination remediation plans that do use RFID tags. And so staff are in communication with those communities. And, and one thing that is on kind of the work plan for this is to, to assess and make sure that, to, to, sorry, to kind of circle back with those communities and see if, if that that is a useful tool. So we're not currently going to be rolling out RFID tags due to the cost. But we are, they are on our radar and we are open to other technologies if they came up and were, you know, within budget and feasibility and, and were effective, I think is what I'm looking for.
Very interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll go to Mayor Elliott and then Counsel Herford.
Thanks, Chair. In one of your update questions, you talk about, we can't extend the time at GFL from 3:00 PM. But we signed a contract with them, so why can we not capture longer hours within that contract?
Through the chair. I'm not sure exactly how much I can get dive into the contract part of it. Sorry, I kind of look at, folks are throwing me at the table. I can speak, kind of, I can speak as much as I can and then contracts are public. Great. So, thank you. So the, that did come up in the negotiations with our curbside collection contractor, GFL. And, and to be quite honest, the site to be, to be, to be very honest, the GFL during the negotiations was on, about to close the site. They, it, it is, they are a commercial industrial site with big trucks moving in and out. And they have a lot of safety concerns about that site. They get paid a little bit from Recycle BC. We don't pay them. The District of Squamish does not pay them. So it's a Recycle BC collection material. And so they see it as part of their, like, their community. They offer that site as part of kind of their, their relationship with being part of the community. So we were during the negotiations on the fence of having that site closed, to be honest. And so we were working with them on how can we keep the site open and still work around their concerns with safety. So it is quite common to see people drive in the exit when their trucks are trying to get out or people, you know, diverting around where their forklifts are going. And so one, the, the hours were shortened purposely because after three o'clock is when their trucks start coming in. So it was very much a safety change. At first, it was a little bit COVID, but then it, it was like a safety issue. So that is, that is really where we landed. We are actively working with them to, to see if we, it is not a conversation that's over. Staff, every time we meet them, are talking about this and asking, you know, can we open on Sundays? Can we do this? What does it look like? So it's, I would say the conversation's not over, but this, in our contract negotiations, staff were not able to extend the hours.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarity on that. 4.10 a ability to discontinue curbside collection. It says, this is a major revision. The curbside collection contractor has encountered several multifamily complexes that pose substantial safety concerns when servicing totes. Is that traffic, pedestrian, what's in the bins? What do you mean by safety concerns?
Through the chair. So safety concerns in a few, a few, or sorry, a few, a couple of complexes are largely around issues such as this, the, the roads. The, like turnaround space at the end of cul-de-sacs in certain locations or locations of sorry, I'm just trying to think. Where there's, so trucks are required to drive in to service the totes and then they have to back out. And then they have to drive in to service the other side and then they back out. So this is a concern because there's substantial amount of reversing in these larger trucks and in I population neighborhoods and whatnot. So those are kind of the safety concerns around that. Does that answer?
Yeah, so a follow up to that. So obviously, past planning decisions haven't accounted for that. We're now moving to centralized collection and multifamily to avoid this situation. But it says that you can discontinue curbside collection. And so where does that leave multifamily? Who else would they go to? And wouldn't they just put the same trucks on the road? And wouldn't they just put the same trucks on the road, just a different contractor?
Question through the mayor, or through the chair, sorry. So the intent is that if, uh, if a complex, after working with District of Squamish staff from the planning department, solid waste department, et cetera, are unable to, to, to resolve the kind of logistical challenges, this allows the District of Squamish to, to discontinue the, the curbside collection. And the intent is that they would move to centralized. So we would then work with them to say, okay, you have 15 units in your complex. This is the size of waste room you need and to how, ensure that you still have diversion opportunities for your residences, residents. And, um, and here are some good locations that work with, you know, work within your, your site. So they would, the intent is they would move to centralized collection from the curbside.
Sorry, if, if I, if I could just add to, to.
Hold on, just, uh, yeah, I saw Mr. Wickham was gonna check if he wanted to, uh, jump in here. Sorry, just trying to manage everyone. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Wickham.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just, just to add that, to that response, we, we have had a couple of situations, um, where this comes up. It's, it's very rare. And we would only, uh, remove the, uh, curbside collection in, in an extreme situation. But for, for example, we do see situations where, uh, Strata has chosen to, um, not allow the frac routing that was originally designed for their Strata. Um, and so this, this gives the, the, the district, uh, an, an opportunity to, um, to negotiate from a position of strength, I suppose. That we, we need to, uh, have a safe situation. And so, um, the, a, a solution that, that is safe needs to be found. And if it's not, then they will need to move to a centralized, uh, um, system. And, and so it's, uh, certainly not something that we would, uh, wield willy-nilly, but is important to allow us to negotiate with Stratus.
Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. I, I don't think we have a lot of control over Stratus, but it, so that area concerns me quite a bit. We have a clause in here, 4.4. A residential building containing more than three dwelling units is not eligible to receive residential curbside collection service. We're just working hard to introduce missing middle housing like quadplexes and triplexes. So where does that leave us with that clause in there?
Ms. White?
My, I can't tell. Can you hear me? Thank you. Um, so, it's an excellent question. The, this point is aligned with our OCP wording right now. So I can't speak to orplexes, or sorry, triplexes. I would have to refer back to the planning department who, who this is kind of working with. I'm not sure what they are requiring of triplexes, but I can, I can refer back and bring it back to council.
Thank you. Just one more, Chair, if I can. 4.8C, the district may discontinue or suspend service to a service property at its sole discretion. Where do we define? It just seems really heavy-handed to me. And so where do we define, under what circumstances we were, we would exercise that power?
Ms. White?
Thank you. Um, through the chair. So the, um, apologies, I'm just, want to make sure I'm referencing the correct sections here. So we do have, uh, the, the requirements to be part of our curbside collection system. So, uh, the requirements around contamination, how totes must be maintained, locking them, et cetera. So this piece is about, um, if, if somebody is not in, in compliance with that. Generally, I must say, the intent is never to discontinue, um, the service to an individual. I know we were just talking about complexes, but this is about residents, like one household here. Um, the idea, this is to support that grossly contaminated. So for example, if, if someone, a resident continues to put out grossly contaminated totes, we have the right to not pick it up. We are happy to review this and kind of revise it if you, if, if it's not clear to council. I kind of.
I think my comment on that is that we should refer back to the section in which we would take into consideration when using our sole discretion. Chair, two more questions, but I'm happy to pause if you'd like to move on. In the recyclable materials, Schedule B, I, I was, we have a list and, um, the fourth thing on the list is glass containers and products, which are recyclable, but not in the bins. And I was wondering why this list isn't divided into categories of what goes where. And my second related question to that is, if we're auditing bins, why aren't we just slapping a sticker on them that says no glass? Because my bin has an old list on the inside that includes plastic bags and other things that we now have to take to the depot. So that's what I look at. Every time I lift the lid is an old sign. And I just wonder why we're creating these big, long lists instead of just slapping a big red sticker that says no glass and taking care of one of our biggest issues.
Right. Through the, through the chair. I think, um, the no glass sticker is an excellent suggestion. And staff will take that back and, and see if we can incorporate that in our communications. Because I, we recognize that the totes out there, a lot of them have been heat stamped, uh, with, with no longer correct information. To your point, to the point about, uh, the Schedule B. So Schedule B only applies to, uh, unserviced properties. So that is the ICI, anybody who's on commercial, sorry, excuse me, centralized collection. So, um, the, the definition in the definitions for recyclable material is what applies to what can go in your tote. And this is one of those changes that I kind of gave a brief overview with, related to, to support staff in, in, uh, the progressive enforcement strategy. So the definition in recyclable material is now very much linked to Recycle BC's requirements. It is also, I have to say, left a little bit vague because, as was mentioned previously, not, uh, due to the District of Squamish, but due to the province and Recycle BC, sometimes those materials can change. And we found that having a static list in our schedules was no longer effective. So we've now got a definition linked directly to what is accepted through Recycle BC. The Schedule B is very much what we want to see as options in centralized collection. And this, we wanted to make sure, we tried to keep a little bit open because not every single, um, business in town is going to produce the same waste recyclable material, right? So, um, you know, a bike shop could have a lot of cardboard, right? And then the bakery next door might have zero cardboard hypothetically. So you, you really, we were trying to create a list of what the expectations are for, for commercial and centralized collection without, um, without being too, uh, prescriptive. Does that clarify?
That makes sense, but I think once you've read the whole bylaw, which no one's gonna do, and then you get to Schedule B, it's not clear that this Schedule B is, like, I've forgotten or I didn't read the definitions. And so I think each schedule has to specifically say, this schedule is for ICI or this schedule is for, you know, residential collections, so that people are really, really clear what we're talking about. And my last question is, we now have, um, a joint, uh, contract with Recycle BC that includes Squamish Nation. But how does this enforcement plan even apply? It wouldn't apply to reserve plans, I don't think. But I'm happy to understand better what our agreement is with Squamish Nation as this goes forward.
Right, through the chair. Thank you. That's an excellent question. So, um, I, uh, we will take your, uh, suggestions back for the schedules and, and revise them. I think that's, thank you. That's excellent feedback. Um, with Squamish Nation, uh, the District of Squamish does not intend to do progressive enforcement in the same manner that it will be doing with, uh, residents living on District of Squamish municipal land. So what currently, uh, we are working on, staff are working on with GFL and Squamish Nation is, um, GFL has, uh, has, um, put out a position directly for Squamish Nation residents to be a curbside tune-up person, like it's a job for curbside tune-ups. And the hours are very flexible and it's, the intent is that this position, as I mentioned, GFL is doing it. This position kind of can be done on, uh, a flexible time schedule, right? So, um, it's, you know, X number of hours in a month or something like that. It's built out. And the intent is that, uh, District of Squamish staff will support this position to continue to do curbside tune-ups, regular ones. So we will be doing, um, two in 2022 for District of Squamish land. And then for Squamish Nation, uh, there'll be almost an ongoing curbside tune-up. Because there's only 177-ish, don't quote me on that number, households on our curbside collection. So it's almost as though as they move through, they can kind of loop back and keep going. It's an ongoing position. So, um, and, and intent is that we will support with training and material and, and, uh, anything else that, that might be needed. So that's, um, that's what we've been working on with Squamish Nation.
Thanks, Chair.
Hey, thank you. I'll go to Counsel Herford and Counsel French.
Thank you. Um, I'm curious about the Recycle BC audit and how, given the, um, that chart was kind of, was so all over the place. How does it, how does it work? Because our collection in different neighborhoods happens on different days of the week. So is this Recycle BC staff coming and we're getting a snapshot? Is each one of those data points a different neighborhood? I'm just thinking, if they come on a, if they only come on Wednesdays, they're only catch whatever neighborhood that is. And, and is there more localized data there or have we, um, you have any insight into, into that out of curiosity?
Through the chair, um, maybe I'll let my colleague Jeff speak. He's, uh, kind of been working on the, the data that Recycle BC has been providing us and had the pleasure of participating in a Recycle BC audit a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair, um, that's a, a great question. So the, the way that the audits happen, uh, when the GFL truck is at their depot, and this whole thing, uh, GFL films it for Recycle BC so that they can be sure that the, or material hasn't been tampered with. A truck dumps, uh, they, they mix it with their, uh, with their front loader. Uh, they take a scoop into a mega bag. It's supposed to be about 100 kilograms. They scoop it, put it in, it gets zipped up, uh, a tag goes on that. And then that's sent to the Recycle BC auditing facility, which I believe is in Surrey. It does happen on different days. Um, so looking at the last eight audits, it looks like Thursdays happened three times, Tuesdays happened twice, Wednesdays, Friday. So it is happening across different communities. What we see, or the information that we're able to get from the Recycle BC audits versus the, uh, the curbside tune-ups is, is a little bit different and it helps us understand our contamination different. With our curbside tune-ups, we're able to see how many residents and where are contaminating. Because that's just a lid lift audit, so we're just lifting up the lid and looking at the material on the top. We're not digging through, we're not doing a really thorough examination. We're able to see kind of what percentage of our, uh, of our curbside, uh, recycling bins are, are contaminated. We have a bit of an idea on how much contamination, uh, when those auditors are going around. They, uh, they rank things by, uh, little, some more. Uh, so if plastic bags, if they're the couple, you know, it's, it's little. If there's a, a lot, they'll, they'll say there's a lot. But it doesn't really give us that weight-based, uh, information that Recycle BC is looking at. For Recycle BC, we really get, uh, detailed information for that particular time. So similar to our, uh, waste audits that are done at the landfill, it's kind of a snapshot in time. It's that one day. It's not 100% representative of what everyone in the community is doing. But between the information that we get from Recycle BC and our curbside tune-ups as well as monitoring. So when we go to GFL and just watch the material get dumped and take kind of a, a couple of pictures and, and a poke through, between those different methods, we're able to get a better sense kind of overall of how the community is performing on the recycling.
Thank you. If I can, the, um, thank you. That, that, uh, that helps sort of, it's so randomized it. I understand the, the randomized, uh, output, I guess. The, on the progressive enforcement, um, sort of, one of the first pieces was, um, the collection driver, um, making a note. And from just by observations of drivers, they're, they're, um, not necessarily from what I can see anyways, I don't notice them noticing the totes besides lining up the, the vehicle to grab it and, and dump it. So how, how do we, that, so this piece looks like a change to me, uh, out of their, their requirements. I'm just curious how, what would trigger them to, to actually, uh, step out of the vehicle and, and write this when they're not necessarily even lifting the lid to have a look before they grab it and, and chuck it in? So, um, yeah, if you could. I mean, on that.
Yeah, through the chair, um, that's a great comment. The drivers aren't going to be getting out of the trucks. If you look at the collection truck next, then they come around, um, in the hopper. So where the totes get tipped, you'll see there's a little camera in there. It's in the top left corner, uh, on most of the trucks. So the driver has a screen in his cab where he can see, uh, the material getting dumped in. That would be one way that they would notice it. If a tote has a, uh, something sticking out of it, like a large plastic, uh, children's toy, that's another way the driver would notice it. And then a third way is if the driver hears, uh, a loud clump. So if there was, say, concrete or bricks in there, that's gonna make a different sound tipping into their truck than, um, plastic bottles and, and cardboard. So with that first step, uh, we want it to be kind of as broad as possible so that we can start to catch, you know, all of the, all of the contamination. If we, you know, go back and, and see, you know, that there isn't that contamination, maybe there was a, a mistake on the, the camera, that camera was dirty. That's when that, that house wouldn't be in the, uh, enforcement funnel anymore.
Thank you. And I got one, one more. I have some, somewhere along the, this process, I got in my head the, the, um, the concept of our, our landfill waste being contaminated with recycling. And, and, um, I, I'm, I view all of our recycling programs as, as, you know, diversion is what we're, is what we're after, whether it's organics or we're talking recycling today. And, um, and my concern, and I, I brought it up the first time we discussed this as well, is, is making sure that our recycle bins are friendly places where it's happy and you're not exposing ourselves to potential, um, fines by, by making a, a mistake. And I, I appreciate sort of the, the approach of education and it, it sounds like you'd almost have to make a conscious effort to get a fine under this program, uh, is what I'm, is what I'm hearing and, and feeling. But I want to make sure that it doesn't negatively affect, just sort of that it's out there. I don't want to negatively affect our diversion rate. And, um, so I, I'm curious about how these things sort of in- interact. And if we push our, our contamination rate to, uh, you know, a provincial low of, uh, 1.4%, and we can all celebrate that, but the, what's going to landfill increases, um, at the same rate, that's not a victory. So I want to kind of zoom out to that overall victory of really high diversion rate, um, with a low contamination rate and how those things, um, interact. So I think at our last meeting, Mr. Wen, you, you were talking about the, um, we can see sort of the weights, uh, coming out of the different neighborhoods as a way to sort of talk about that, that second piece of our, uh, landfill being contaminated with recycling and the potential for higher diversion rates. But I, I'm, I'm concerned about this area still and I, and, um, I didn't see anything today that really made me feel a lot better about that. So I don't know if, if staff has any. I didn't see anything today that really made me feel a lot better about that. So I don't know if, if staff has any more insight into that or something else coming on the, on the in, in this area, whether it's a driver saying, hey, when I, when I dump this, I noticed there's a bunch of recyclables in there, although most of that's bagged. So I, I don't know how, how, how is that to be, to be addressed, I guess, increasing the recycling out of our, out of our, our waste stream?
Thanks. Through the chair. This is an excellent point. And it is a fine line, as you've mentioned. It's, we do want to have low contamination rate in our recycling. But we also want low contamination rate, I think you could say, across all spheres, organics, garbage, and, and we want folks to put things in the right bins, essentially. And so the approach that staff is taking, part of it is through this bylaw amendment. So by reducing the fee, we don't want it to make people, that $500 is a lot of money. I can see, so is 100 as well, but 500 is like, I think would deter a lot of folks and, and you would see a lot of people be like, I don't, I really don't know. I'm going to throw it in. So we're hoping that by reducing the fee, it, it, it provides a little bit more confidence or area for residents to, to, to reach out and find the right information. As you mentioned, we really are focusing on that support, as much support as we can. I mean, we have limited resources. So what can we do that makes the most impact and helps people change behavior? So by giving that direct feedback through the enforcement steps of one, two, to, one to three, it's like, it's saying here, we're, here's what we're seeing, call us, contact us. Here's more information. Here's the, our beautiful what goes where guide. How can we help you more? So I think that diversion piece, I mean, getting, helping people figure out what can go in the recycling tote, we, we're putting a lot of effort into that. At the same time, if there is a little bit of recycling that ends up in the landfill, that, that is a concern and we don't want to, we don't want that to happen. But we want to to be clear, our, our residential curbside garbage only accounts for, and again, this is, I'm got a little bit dated information here. But around 20% of the garbage we see at the landfill. So when we look at how much diversion at the landfill, we really, really are focusing on the ICI and multifamily home and centralized collection systems. That's really where we will see change in, in moving that dial of getting recyclables out of our landfill. But I, we do not want to let residents off the hook in the sense, we don't want, we don't want people start to throw their milk jugs in the, in the garbage for fear of fines. So we will be using the monitoring tools to help inform us. So we do do, we have a one thing I did not mention, but we will be doing a landfill audit this year. And so that will be a good tool that will happen in the summer to kind of verify, make sure that the recyclables we're seeing are not higher than in the past years, right? Because that would be a good, that will speak to whether folks are starting to kind of fall into that pattern that you've, you've mentioned. So we're, we're working with what we have and what we can put out to the community, but also just checking back to see what the impact is, is where we're at. Hope that answers your question.
Add Shannon. I, I think you've really put your finger, Counselor Herford, on, on the, on the trickiest part of all of this. And, and as Ms. White has said, she, she and the team are, are working to, to strike a balance. But part of that balance is, is residents need to understand that it does matter. There are consequences to the recycling system and to the landfill, ours and others. If they place a bunch of glass in, in the bin because they're annoyed that they don't like the hours, the glass drop off, and so they're just going to throw it in, in, in the bin. And then that glass breaks and contaminates the, the entire load, which is then a safety hazard for the people who are working on, on the sorting of the recycling gear or recycling items and needs to all end up in a landfill. It's not our landfill, it's a different landfill. But there are consequences to the, the feeling that when in doubt, throw it in the recycling bin. And, and so this is, we're really, the team is trying to strike a balance of, of illustrating the importance of, of this, illustrating the importance of the entire recycling system. Recycling doesn't just disappear when it goes in the blue bin. It's an entire system downstream and that's important. And, and there does need to be eventual consequences if, if people are simply screwing up that system because they feel like it should be a different way or something, you know, that's, this is, there, there are consequences to bad behavior. And, and that's, that's the other side, other side of the coin. It's a very difficult balance to, to strike. And I think the, the team's doing the best and, and asking for new tools.
Thank you. So just note, we worked through our break before the affordable housing item. And so if counsel can tighten up the rest of the questions, we can avoid working through our, too much of our lunch. So I will go to Counselor French and then myself, and then back to Counselor Race.
Thanks, Chair. Quick and easy first question. In Schedule D, banned materials, the banned material list includes a blank line at number 18. Is that just an oversight or some kind of strategic plank?
Through the chair, I believe it's an oversight. I'll just verify the red line version, but I think it's just.
Okay. Well, you're looking at that. I'll throw out my second and final question. And, and prefaced the question with, thanks for sharing the information about the pressure to close the Queen's Way facility. Based on GFL being a private company that's growing and expanding, operating on private land, I, I think the company will just continue to push for that outcome of that depot not, no longer being located there. So has staff put any thought into a long-term strategy for replacing that depot?
Right through, through the chair. First question, it was blank. I will, we'll, we'll fix it. Thank you. The, yes, staff have, there have been meetings and looked into potential sighting. There was a little bit of budget put aside in 2021 in particular, because there was concern that, that this might happen. So it is something we are continuing to work on behind the scenes. That being said, as long as the Queen's Way depot is open, as much as the District of Squamish staff pushes, Recycle BC is unlikely to allow us to open a second, a third site in our, in our community. We've asked and we've pushed on this, but they have like, apologies, I can't think of the appropriate word, but they have numbers that say, you know, X sites within certain distances of each other and population and whatnot. They've got some calculations. And so right now we do not have any plans to open another site, but we're trying to develop backup plans in case GFL enacts the clause to close their site.
Great. And thanks for the gender neutral language in the bylaw. It's awesome.
Okay, thank you. So the question I had, I don't want to get into it too deep, but just when you're speaking about the numbers, if we're at 10% contamination, people with a similar system have 9% contamination, I think the, our expectation is 6.1% and the province wants to get to 3%. Are we pursuing the wrong system? Is that an indication of that? Or do we expect to hit the 6.1% to be able to do that if we stay on track?
I'm, I'll answer, I, I think Jeff is better positioned because he's been speaking with other communities, but I do think that there are communities that have substantially lower percentages than the District of Squamish in comparable situations. But I'll let you, you've been doing the research.
Through the chair, we have seen our contamination rate drop over the last 18 months or so, which has shown us that if we do put the, the effort and resources into the, into production of, of contamination, we can achieve that. There are other, as Shannon mentioned, other municipalities that have had similar problems, have worked through the, the CRP program with Recycle BC and been able to achieve their goals of lowering their contamination rate. Some of those communities are now back into the CRP program again because they, you know, might have relented a little bit on, on some of their communications and some other efforts. So what we, we've kind of seen from this is that we can achieve those goals. We can reduce that contamination, provided we continue to provide the information that our residents need and, and keep up the efforts so that everyone knows what's acceptable in the recycling bin.
Okay, thank you. I guess what I'm sort of wondering though, when I, if 9% is, as I understood, the average for people in communities that have a similar system to ours, but the provincial average is 6.1%, that suggests that there's a different system that works better, at least on the surface. And so I'm wondering, is there a, a cheaper, more effective system? Or is there some other piece of this I, I'm not catching and, and we are actually pursuing the best system still?
I can, I'll give it a start. So through the chair. The, there are other systems. So we have the single stream automatic. There are systems such as in some of the municipalities within Metro Vancouver where they have multiple bins or bags at the curb. So the materials are more separated, therefore they see higher or sorry, lower contamination rates because residents are required to put cardboard in a bag, glass in a box, whatever it looks like, right? So I believe we did, staff did look into that when we joined Recycle BC. There's a little bit of discussion with Recycle BC if we should try and move that way at the time. It was a staff decision to remain with our current system because there has been a substantial amount of money invested in the infrastructure we have in our community. And then there's a whole behavior change and, and system-wide change. That being said, that right now the staff, staff are taking the approach that we are going to continue working to educate and, and reduce our contamination rates with our system as is. We will be doing a, a collection system review in 2023. And so in 2023, we will have this information from all the work that's going to be happening in the next year, as well as our, our public engagement that we'll be doing through the zero waste strategy. And so that will kind of all be bundled together and, and we'll do an analysis being like, okay, is there something in the system we can change? What is our sphere of influence? Is it the recycling? Like, is it the single stream automatic? Is it, is it just the curbside collection in total? We, we don't have the answer yet for that, but that's what we'll be looking at. So the intent is this year will, this year with the progressive enforcement strategy and the public outreach will inform that piece.
Thank you. I'll go to Counselor Race.
Thank you. And I'll be quick. I, I just wanted to build on the mayor's point about, I guess, section eight, sub C, the district may continue or suspend service at its sole discretion. And I think as a matter of general philosophy, I'm not sure it's appropriate for municipal government to be able to just suspend a service that it has a mandate to deliver. Typically in documents I've seen over my lifetime, there's some threshold. It's like a landlord can't terminate a lease unless there's a breach of this, that, or the next thing that goes unremedied after 60 days or something like that. So I think it's a matter of setting a threshold of non-compliance, whatever that might be. Unpaid fines for three months or something like that. Then the district might exercise its discretion, but it doesn't bind the district to exercise that discretion, but it opens the door then. So I think it's a drafting issue, but I think there should be some threshold as opposed to just clear and bridle discretion. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to, a resolution to receive the report. I've heard some feedback around clarity, some additional clarity around what can and can't go into bins. And there's been a few points about stickers and a, a new flyer or, or sort of annual information on that. Making sure that the bylaws aren't providing barriers to missing middle housing. And some comments about more specific criteria about when service could be removed. I'm not sure if you had anything else, Ms. White?
I, I believe that captures it all. I'll have to review my notes and.
Okay. Okay, so we have a mover. Counselor Herford seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, anyone opposed? And motion carries. Thank you very much. We will break for 10 minutes. Is that going to be enough time to get everyone in the room? So assume so. So we'll break until a time change, 11:25 and see you back shortly. Thanks. Turn my video. All right. Welcome back, everyone. We are on to the affordable housing society topic. We are running behind, but this is an important topic. So I, I want to give it the attention it deserves. But if we can try and stay focused, that'll be helpful. There are a series of specific things that staff is asking for feedback on with this. I'll just direct everyone's attention to that and I'll hand it over to Mr. Buxton.
Thank you, Counselor Peddingill and counsel, the mayor when she returns. Gary Buxton, one of the general managers here at the district. So today we're hopefully coming toward the end of a, what's been a, a slow but steady progress towards forming an entity, in this case, a society around our affordable housing issue. Hopefully the intent today is to figure out what final changes we need to make to bring this back to council on December 7th for formal approval on that date. Sandy McKay from McCollough Development Services is on the line too. McCollough has been helping us with, with the work to get it to this point. Katie Fabris may be online, but may, no, not today. So just Sandy and myself can answer counsel's questions. As noted, it's been before council in various iterations a number of times. Hopefully we are getting towards the, the very end here. Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Arthur. Previously, we have discussed the options that are available to council and to the community in how to form this entity. We've looked at corporations, we've looked at internal staffing models. We've landed on the society model for a number of reasons, principally around it being sufficiently independent of the district that it doesn't affect our debt and borrowing capacities. So on that note, into the presentation. There we go. So we have landed on a name. That reservation was needed as part of the societies act registration and we've also pre-registered a number of website domains so that we don't lose this in the middle of the process. So yes, we have had to move forward with a name. It was discussed amongst the nonprofits quite a while ago, but that, that's what we've landed on. It's not set in stone, but we'll have some work to undo if we want to, and redo if we want to proceed with a different name. So today we'll look at the society bylaws, the, the proposed constitution, and then the long, short, medium and long-term goals for that organization. So the focus today is really on, we're looking for feedback on the membership structure and has that been crafted appropriately? The structure of directors, which really has not changed from the last time that counsel has seen it. The contents of the constitution, which I believe you may have seen in a very draft form previously, and then the medium and short, medium and long-term goals. So the, the bylaw or the bylaws that you see before you are required by the provincial societies act. They're very procedural in nature. I've tried to draw your attention to where the real substantive content is. The rest is very procedural in terms of how meetings are conducted, how notices performed and all of those other things that really don't fundamentally alter or the, the basis of the discussion today. Where are we then? Right on the, yes. So jumping sort of to the, to the first item of substance, and that is membership of the society. And that's really, if, if there's an analog, it would be the ownership of the, of the society. So there are two, two elements of membership. There are votes. There are voting or non-voting members. The voting members you can see at the district and the four participating nonprofit societies that we've been working with to get us to this point. There are no non-voting members specified in the bylaws. Those can be appointed by the voting members. So that leaves it a little open. It's quite possible that the directors could fill, fill that role, but that would be the choice of the voting members at that time. The membership options that we looked at are the, the voting, non-voting split or proposal that's before council day in the draft bylaw. That's the district, the nonprofit agencies. It spreads the engagement and commitment and increases that independence from the district and decreases the likelihood that, that the society is going to impact the, the district's borrowing or debt, borrowing or debt limits. Another option is the district could be the sole member. This is probably the only other viable option if we wanted to go that way. The district then would have to annually appoint the members. So we have those odd sort of meetings when the district talks to itself through a, a meeting. And at that point, we would be appointing all the members. And the directors each year lessens the involvement of other societies and potentially decreases the likelihood that the society will be independent. And then finally, the, the board of directors that you can see specified later in the bylaw could be the members. That disperses accountability, potentially is, creates less commitment to the society. Potentially makes it a little, a little more unpredictable in terms of you've, you're much less certain about who may be on the board from year to year and making decisions. So the issue of independence from the district is really to, to decrease or lessen the potential impact on borrowing and debt. If, if it is not seen as independent, then it potentially would impact our ability to borrow and our debt position. And that's really not where we want to be, given that we, we know the situation that we're at and that the expenditures we need to go through. You've seen the cap, the five-year financial plan. We really don't need the society to be sort of weighing further on those considerations. So we're trying to avoid the consolidation in our financial statements and keep it independent. We have conducted an initial internal review. Some of our staff have some expertise in this matter in the finance department. There is no negative impact. It, we think we are where we need to be. We've also had some preliminary response from the finance ministry and they have the same opinion. The final say on this or the final opinion we're seeking is with our auditors to confirm what we've heard from the other two channels. So we think we are where we need to be to avoid those issues with dependency. In terms of the directors, the analog there is these are the people in the society that would be the managers performing the, the day-to-day work and providing the day-to-day governance. So there's one director, each from the voting members in council, one director from the Squamish Nation, all their housing society should they choose to participate. One director from an affordable housing unit, and then one director or a minimum of one director representing private sector development. The potential backgrounds of those directors is listed. And then two directors with expertise or experience in support services. And again, those, the requisite background is there. And that's unchanged from the last time council saw that, I think back in, in June. So I say they would work with the, the directors, those up to 12 people would work with the executive director, coordinate day-to-day activities. Those directors will, will be appointed by the members, the voting members on a rotating basis. So three-year terms that can recur. Again, we, we would like rotating terms, so we, we, we have some overlap and we don't have mass appointments on a, on a one or three-year basis. So there's some continuity on the board. And the makeup's intended to be quite fluid with those latter. Two to four members being appointed from the property or housing planning background and then the construction background. So it, it could be quite fluid according to need. So if we're in a, in a, a period of time when it's largely administrative and we're working on policies, you may have more housing operators, property managers and legal professionals. If you're getting going on a construction project, you would then move the focus over to have more real estate developers, builders and contractors on the board. So. The, so that's the, the bylaws. So I say there's a significant amount more material in those that is largely procedural in nature. The constitution outlines the activities that the society is to conduct. It's part of its business practice. So. The constitution, I believe that may be slightly dated, but to increase affordable housing options through those four action pillars that again, council has seen previously and those remain unchanged. Financial independence, leading the development operation of new affordable housing units. Buying, selling land and other property, constructing, managing and operating affordable housing projects. So again, that's a very brief summary of the two-page document that is the, that is the draft constitution. We've also provided a, a director's recruitment package. And within that, we've tried to provide, it's perhaps not the ideal location, but it doesn't fit in the constitution, doesn't fit in the bylaws. Given that those two documents will endure well into the future. And the short, medium, long-term goals are looking at the one to five or six-year timeframe. But to give potential directors an idea of, of what the organization would be doing in the first five years. So the short-term goals in the first one to two years. So hiring and getting the structure set up, becoming the face of affordable housing in the community and offering meaningful service to the participating nonprofits and essentially initial activities. The three to five-year medium-term goals, procuring additional operations funding, operating and managing perpetually affordable housing units that may come to the, the district or look like they are coming to the community, to the district through community amenity contributions. Education and advocacy, research projects and council advice, and the development of new affordable housing units as opportunities arise. Then in the three, sort of five-year timeframe, the longer-term goals, holding and operating units that we've either acquired or built. Trying to move towards a, a more full suite of housing operations and services to nonprofits and continuing to lead the development of new affordable housing, housing units when opportunities arise. So that's a very brief summary of, of three documents. I say, in large part, there are small portions of each of those documents that we need to focus in on. So really we're trying to focus council's attention today on the membership, membership structure. That's the voting and non-voting members, the structure of directors, which I say hasn't changed from the last time we saw it. Is the constitution appropriately constructed? And then the short, medium and long-term goals are those where we think the society should be. So with that.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton. I'm wondering if you can leave those four bullets up on the screen while we go to questions?
Absolutely.
Great, thanks. I'll go to councillor Herford and then councillor Race.
Thank you. As far as membership goes, I was thinking about sort of financial expertise, which I suppose falls under a few of those different professions, sort of touch on that realm. And I was just wondering how that, how that piece was, was thought of. It seems to me to be a, sort of one of the driving things as we, as we talk about our borrowing capacity as a, as a district and the need for this entity to take on some more financial roles. Or if that just falls to someone that would be appropriate in a treasurer position or.
If, if it was council's choice to add that to the list of potential backgrounds for the, for the directors, that's a fairly easy change.
Okay, that seems important to me. And perhaps the, the developer, there's the, the, there's a chance that the developer working in that role might have come with some expertise, but I think some financial expertise would be important there. But I'm not quite sure what that position would be, how that would be defined.
I'll get the hang of this through the chair in response. I think that would be the, including that area of expertise rather than under the, with the real estate developers and construction. That area of business expertise comes with the financial understanding of how to get a building out of the ground. I think if you were looking, I would put it with the housing planners and social services. But that's, I, I appreciate the intent, so.
One more. On the housing continuum from sort of, from ending homelessness to, to ownership, everything that I saw stopped short of that stating that goal of that, of having some affordable ownership, which I understand is a, is, would be a future, a future action. But as I look at our, our strategic plan and the affordable housing and diversity, the last bullet point has that ownership piece and it was, appeared to be missing from my, from my read. And I'm just curious if that was intentional and is covered off in, in sort of the, the future actions that, that are mentioned? Or if there was a specific intent?
I think the intent was to be as general as possible. I, I'm looking at the, the constitution and I'm looking principally A and B. And those don't reference either rent or purchase. So I think it's sufficiently general that it accompli, that it accomplishes both. If you wanted to specify both rental and for purchase, that again, that's relatively straightforward. I think as, as it is right now, it allows for either or both.
Okay, and council, just a reminder, if we can stick to questions and then we'll try and go through the areas of interest as comments after. But if we can stick to focus questions at this point. Sorry, and councillor Race.
Thank you. Mine were actually mostly comments, but the one question was, this is the entity, I take it, that might, as this program evolves, end up owning title to some of the affordable housing units in the district, wherever they may come from. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. That was my question.
Thanks, councillor Anderson.
Mr. Buxton, I just might start by pointing out a potential typo. And this is in the, this is board, board, board member guide under indicator of short-term success. Second to last bullet, lead development. I believe the district is, is, should may perhaps be replaced by the society in that section. It's the second to last bullet, page nine of the board member guide, just might be something that you might check. My first question is regarding the Squamish Nation. Going back some years and in conversations with their local program directors, there was substantial interest in off-reserve housing opportunity. And I wonder whether that may have changed with their new strategy paper, I think was released about a year, 18 months ago or so. Maybe there's less emphasis on off-reserve housing as, as a deliberate strategy. I wonder if you could update us on any conversation with this, with this Squamish Nation on this point? Because it would seem to me if there is substantial interest on, on the nation's part in off-reserve housing opportunities, maybe they should be considered as one of those core voting members if there's a significant stake in that. Do you have any, have you received any feedback on, on that issue and on Squamish Nation interest as a voting member in that respect?
No, there's been a very limited direct engagement with the nation on this other than the informal group that has met around this on a number of occasions includes a Squamish Nation member who happens to be on the board of the housing society. So I would assume they are aware, but have we actively engaged? No. We've left the opportunity open for them to participate.
Thank you. My second question that concerns the proposed constitution, and I'll refer to items two E, again, lead the development and operation of new affordable housing units with a focus on acquiring land, building and acquiring new units. And we have that as item four that we may come back to later on your points of interest. And item two K, to enter into agree arrangements, contracts or undertakings with any government, federal, provincial, municipal or otherwise in any persons and so forth. My question here is, a scenario might be partnerships. And I, and I'm just probing here, for example, a church property where the church may not wish to sell the land, but may wish to enter into a partnership with a, for a housing program. And we have church properties here that, that are, the sites are, have development plans or redevelopment plans. And so what my question is, is whether that scenario of partnerships and just the, the example of a partnership with a church or some other entity, is that sufficiently covered in the wording for E and K? It's lead and acquire land, but what about a different type of a relationship with a potential partner? Whether that might be sufficiently clarified or, or open enough in the language that we have there? And maybe, Mr. Buxton, that is a comment, but it just struck me that there could be such scenario and I was looking for the wording to cover them.
Through the chair, I, I think K is sufficiently vague that person or persons or otherwise would cover a nonprofit. But if council wishes to be specific that partnerships and nonprofit agencies be included in K, it's a relatively easy, straightforward amendment.
Thank you. Another quick question. The item two A in the constitution refers to the standard now 60-year-old CMHC guideline. It's probably 60 years old now, at least 50, of 30% of gross income spent on housing expenses. I wonder, and I haven't checked lately, whether the CMHC itself isn't revising that number. I wonder whether that today in the 2020s, whether that percentage even isn't out of date in Canada and in many parts of the world, and it is a worldwide, they've copied from the CMHC, so 30%. Is that still useful? What does McCullough or our advisors say about that? Has that come up at all as a standard for affordability?
No, I'm not aware of, of any other metric being available. Don't want to speak for the rest of the world, but certainly in, in BC, I haven't heard yet of any significant change to that 30% metric. That's, this is coming directly from the housing strategy that we've approved. So we've parroted that language quite frankly.
Perhaps if it has been revised upward, that might be something that might be in our news, might be probably well, well discussed anyway. And finally, a quick, short question if I can, Chair. And that is, could you clarify, Mr. Buxton, and it's in your 10 to 12 director's slide. What is, how might housing operators be different from property managers? So property managers are listed under support services, whereas housing operators come under private development sector. I wasn't clear on what exactly those two terms, if they're standard categories of, of services, how they might differ and why they might be assigned respectively to those two different categories. Housing operators, property managers, are they kind of not the same?
They could be. A housing operator could be operating programs within a structure that a property manager manages. The property manager is specific to the nuts and bolts of operating and maintaining a structure. And housing operator operates programs within a structure. Are the two often the same? Yes. Are they, could they be different? Yes. So that, that's the only reason that they're, that they're separated that way.
Thank you. That's it for now, Chair. Okay, thanks. Just before I go to Mayor Elliott, I didn't have everyone on my screen. Mr. McKay, did you want to respond to the 30% number at all? I couldn't tell if you were raising your hand.
No, that's okay. Gary took care of it. It's, I was just gonna say that it is still the standard across British Columbia.
Great, thank you. And I'll go to Mayor Elliott.
Hi, I'm just looking at.
the whole section around membership dues and members in good standing. So we talk about the amount of annual membership dues, if any must be determined by the board. But then it says the member is not in good standing if the member fails to pay the member's annual membership dues, if any. And they're not in good standing so long as those those dues are remain unpaid. And then we talk about how you can vote people out. But is there anything else that constitute not being a member in good standing? Because if the members decide that they don't want to have dues, then how how would we determine if they're a member in good standing? And so I got into this sort of circular argument in my head. And are there other terms by which we would say that a member is not in good standing? Maybe you could
More importantly, under two eight, where it's a willful breach of the society's constitutional bylaws or improper or unbecoming conduct that that might hold you in not in good standing. So it would probably be appropriate for two five to refer to two eight. To I think that would help resolve that circularity.
My next question is around the makeup of the the board. And we have four voting members who sit on the board that manage that have experience in support services, the housing sector. But then we set aside another two for people with similar skill sets. And I'm wondering what the rationale is for that, given what we really want to do is build housing across the spectrum that doesn't include supportive housing, which is the specialty of these folks in a lot of ways. So what's the rationale for skewing the the board more towards social housing knowledge versus for market but below market pricing?
Through the chair. Now, I might perhaps quickly look at Sandy, see if he can recollect how we came to that division a good number of months ago. And if you can, if you have any, I'm just struggling to remember the decision making on that back a few months ago. Sandy, if you do, I'd appreciate it. If you don't, I'll have a crack at it.
Yeah, I think through the chair, our expectation is that not all of those positions will end up being filled at the same time. So to have some overlap there where we can have, you know, up to two from this section, up to two from this section, and likely they'll only be one or or potentially two for another one. So there is some room to play around with the board composition within these guidelines. I think we ended up leaning towards nonprofit providers and that type of housing because that was who was we were first developing this, that was who our partners were, and that was who was interested, I think, after council's comments that we wanted to add more of the developer side of the business. Then then I think we added a few more in without taking additional ones out. So maybe that's a place where Gary and I can revisit if that's if that's something you feel would be valuable.
Thank you. I probably have some comments around that a little bit later. And then in 5.3, the board should hold a minimum of 10 meetings per year held monthly. And I just wondered, that feels more like a working board than a strategic board. And shouldn't that be determined by the Board of Directors?
We could certainly leave it to their discretion. Absolutely. This is a, some of this has been drawn from other boards bylaws that have been running for quite some time that maybe have different priorities. So we could certainly leave that, the board meeting frequency to their their discretion.
I just wonder it's setting a minimum rather than prescribing what is necessary. So at least meeting quarterly, but more frequently at the discretion of the board.
Certainly, we could, we could do that.
And then just something that confused me a little bit, under 5.14, Director Conflict of Interest, it seemed that clauses D and E were actually one clause, but were separated into two, talks about will absent themselves from the meeting or portion thereof, at which the contract transaction or matter is discussed. But they're separated in our drafting.
That's correct. That's a Microsoft Word failure, that part, not mine, but I'll fix that.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. One, it does talk about who can attend board meetings. And it talks briefly alludes to closed meetings. I'm just wondering if there is a standard closed for confidential reasons of confidentiality. And so in this context, is there a standard definition or understanding of confidentiality? Or I guess, do we need to define the conditions more specifically for closed?
No, and Ms. Arthur's going to confirm it's land labor illegal, same as us. That that would be the only, the only reason to go in in camera.
Okay, thank you. And now the other question. Has staff considered, and maybe this is a question for council, but sort of at a high level, you know, we're talking about funding, at least in the short to medium term, this society as a district. At the end of the day, do we have expectations or feel we need to specify? At the end of the day, we want 100 new units, 50 on 50 rental on the market in five years, sort of when all is said and done. Did you have any discussion about including something like that somewhere as a funding agreement, maybe not constitution, but I'm just wondering?
I mean, if that was council's choice to provide that level of specificity, council could do that.
Does staff have any sort of sense of what it would hope to see, given this framework we're putting in place of what we expect the outcome in that respect might be?
To be honest, the difficulty that that we're going to deal with with respect to new housing units is land. The society, like the district, will need land on which to build new new units. I'm not aware that we we have land, significant pieces of land that we can give to the society without significantly affecting our disposition strategy. So if land is made available somehow, then yes, it's it's eminently possible to get new units built on them. But that's going to be, it's been our issue for a number of years, and it's going to be the issue for the society is they're going to need to find land. So that's the context in which we look at the provision of new units. Where is it going to happen? It's not impossible, but I don't, I can't point to five acres of land that the society will be able to get next year or the year after.
Okay, so maybe if I can follow that up, then if we're if we believe that it's going to be very difficult to develop new units, and it might be through just a redevelopment of or refinishing or turning existing owned units into rental units or something. But if we believe that it's going to be very challenging for us or a society to do that, I guess, what then is the the core benefit of this society aside from bringing us new units?
One of which is all of the the program and policy work that currently struggles to be resourced inside the district. The second, perhaps the most important one is I'm at the 90% likelihood rate that we're going to receive units from a from a developer's community amenity contribution. Those need to be managed by someone. The society would be that entity. So it will have, I'm reasonably assured, within a few years, it's going to have a significant number of units that it manages. Perhaps it doesn't own them, but it operates and manages.
Okay, thank you. So I will go to comments. Maybe I'll just go around the room. And if we can try and address them. Maybe if each counselor can try and go through and order all four, and we'll go through that way. So I'll start with you, Counselor Anderson.
Mr. Buxton, with respect to membership structure and proposed structure, the directors, I'll just take both and both on. And I'd like to echo Mayor Elliott's concern that or that we be mindful of the potential for not paying sufficient attention in our scheme with our new society partners to low income rental. And I speak from experience, between 2010, 2014, we had an active housing options group work that were met monthly. But the regular members were the same persons in this representing the same organizations as are proposed to be voting members here. And it was successfully addressed, but it was a regular challenge to keep attention also on low income rental. And that's just to pass that that concern to echo Mayor Elliott on that point. And otherwise, I would like to suggest that I appreciate the flexibility built into the board structure and the membership structure. In our report to council, there is missing the term minimum, but that is found clearly in the constitution and in the board member guide and elsewhere in the documents in front of us. And I appreciate that flexibility. I think that will come in as are the projects that may be undertaken by the society and the challenges and opportunities will evolve, that there's sufficient flexibility there. So I'm very happy with what has been presented here. With respect to the short term, I I do think that identifying that next project is something that can't start soon enough, and that there are potential conversations within the community regarding that next project for which we need a nimble board ready to go to work right off the bat. And while we in 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 the district have been hampered or constrained by lack of time and resources on the part of staff to to have that nimbleness over the last some time and mandate as well, they should be right off the bat looking for the next project. And I was, I don't sort of not looking for wording on that, but I do hope that that's the expectation. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. Just thoughts on membership structure. I wish that the Squamish Nation was maybe more involved in the project. And if there was a way for the Squamish Nation to increase its participation, I think that would be a good thing, whatever that could potentially look like. And the meeting frequency, I grew with the mayor, that maybe 10 per year is more than what's needed. And I like the idea of building in or leaving it up to the directors with a potential minimum of quarterly. I think that that could work very well. The constitution looks fine to me. And I think that staff and our consultants on this project have done a really good job of laying out short, medium, and long term goals. And clearly, excellent work has been done on this project. Those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mayor Elliott.
Chair, do you want me to address the first two? So because the first two speakers talked about? Or are you going to come around and do the second bullet again?
I was, I was hoping each person would trying to address the first four in order.
Well, you want me to do all four?
Yeah. And you may have to go around again. I'll try and draw for, and we'll see what happens.
Okay, so I think I think the membership structure is crafted appropriately. I do think the right place for the nation is on the Board of Directors. So I don't think they need to be voting members necessarily. But eventually, it'd be nice just to have one housing authority for the whole valley. Just saying. And I think what needs to be a little bit more clear to me is are these organizations appointing someone to the board? And are that will there be alternates? Or do kind of like the SLRD, we appoint someone, and if they can't show up, or do we want, no, this is your board appointment, and you have to show up every meeting? That is the expectation of you, which I think is preferable. So I wouldn't want to see a loose sort of membership structure where, you know, one time it's the executive director, the next time it's a manager, and it's just whoever's available. So I think that applies both for the person who is sitting as the member as well as sitting on the Board of Directors. That would be important to me so that there's consistency. I I am concerned that we've still skewed the Board of Directors a little bit too much towards social housing. And I would have liked to see, you know, finance experience on there, mortgage experience, land economists, people that can creatively work with the folks who are already on the board from our not for profits to really figure out how to structure partnerships and deals, because they've been deep into building pro formas and figuring out who can finance what. And so I feel like we don't quite have the balance right yet on the the Board of Directors. I think that last group of people is still too skewed towards supportive housing and property management, and not enough towards creating housing. In regards to the constitution, I still see references in there to core housing and homelessness, which makes me nervous. I think our job in this society is to deal with housing insecurity. And the role of our nonprofits are to work on core housing. And so I think it would be helpful to have that housing wheel that we used in one of our reports and highlight specifically the areas that we're we're really working towards. And our vision and mission statements still, one of them refers to core housing. And yes, we need to take care of that. But that's, then we say later in the constitution that that's actually not the role of this society. So I'm not quite sure why it's in the vision and mission. If we say further down, but we're actually not working on any housing that requires subsidies or ongoing support. So those two things still aren't in alignment for me. So I just think we need to clarify the language there. Sorry, I'm just scanning through my notes. Oh, yeah. Under notice of meetings, thought it was weird that we're still including fax numbers. But maybe that's a legal requirement. But I don't know anyone who's got a fax machine anymore. Counselor Race. Okay, I stand corrected. But still, in the modern era. Oh, section 8.3, questions from council. It says, council may submit questions for consideration by the society, and the society shall respond to this question within 30 days. I actually thought it would be more reasonable to say would respond in a timeline agreed to by the parties or something like that. Because if it's actually quite a complex question, we wouldn't want to just give them 30 days. So I thought we should somehow hedge there a little bit. Oh, we talk about maintaining financial independence to the largest extent possible, which is pretty vague. And I sort of wrote down, why are we hedging here? And I just wonder if there's examples out there that where financial independence has been achieved. And so I think one of those things that happens in the early years in terms of short, medium, and long-term goals. One, it is going to take five years to see any units built. And so I think in the short term, we have to get the society thinking about potential projects. At the very least, starting at the end of year one. Because by the time you identify the partners or the land and get permits and then get it built, it's five years. And over that time, when we look at the budget, potentially the district has subsidized this organization to the tune of a million dollars. And so shouldn't we have things to show for it at the end of that? So I'm a little bit nervous that we sort of say, well, we can start thinking about housing in years two and three, but then we won't see anything till about years eight to 10 in terms of built assets. And that, when I talk to people of what this housing authority is supposed to do, yeah, it's going to do some policy work, but I always tell people its goal is to build and hold housing for the district. So I feel like we need to up, up that profile in the short-term goals a little bit. And oh, I had another question, which I'll come back to, but okay, sorry. Oh, I didn't understand to provide advice on the allocation of operating agreements for PHA units between the district and service providers. Does that mean that we'll get some, but they might get some for their own programs, Mr. Buckson? More in the core housing area versus what we're holding it for?
So that that's in the constitution that? Sorry, I'm just trying to find.
Yeah, it's in strategic housing implementation, initial activities, years two to three.
Oh, okay.
Oh, page six of the constitution or 118 of our report.
Yeah, yes, I found that. Yes, it's potentially to facilitate discussions that some of the CAC units may be allocated to a certain program that can be funded. It might be youth housing, it might be women seeking fleeing violence, that sort of thing. So providing some guidance on, on those allocations. Hey, there's a need in the community for youth housing. We should put some of these units aside for dealing with that specific issue. So yes, that, that's what that bullet does, yeah.
And is this society positioned to take in grants from the province or the federal government? Or do we have to work through a nonprofit to do that?
No, they could. Financially, they're very independent. They can take on, they can take on debt. You can accept grants, apply for grants.
But the federal, federal and provincial governments would see them as a not-for-profit that they could partner with to build housing. There's no impediment to the grants that are out there that are available now. We would, the society could apply for them.
Correct, yeah. I don't see any impediment to, for them to, for the society to apply for those sorts of grants.
So I think my last comment then with regard to the goals, although I'll keep scanning my notes, is that I guess when I read the short-term goals, I want to see what are we doing today to change the game plan here around affordable housing? So I see that we need to, you know, I think it's brilliant to figure out how we can consolidate services and save our not-for-profits money. But at the end of the day, I don't, still don't see in those initial years, the focus on partnering, building, acquiring that I think is really important if we want to see things built within the first five years. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I maybe should have thought through going through the horseshoe better because now Counselor Race gets the last word. But I'll take my turn now. We started down this road, so. So in terms of the structure and some of the specifics of the bylaws, I, I was sort of wondering if we should specify, it does say if the society dissolves, that the district can assign the, the assets. And I'm just wondering if it's worth clarity in there about whether or not we can assign them to ourselves, especially given our initial investment. Just, just so everyone is clear, there was a fair bit of, you know, detail on general and sometimes not sure if special meetings were mentioned, but general meetings of the membership versus the board and so on. And I did find, I started to wonder if maybe we could simplify some of that a bit and make sure we're covering general and special meetings, both the board and the membership. And I know the societies act does include a template bylaw. And I'm wondering if, if that's a place to start, or maybe we did. So just a bit of feedback there. I did disagree with the idea of unlimited terms. I personally see a lot of value in sort of forcing the board to constantly be reaching out, building new relationships and so on. And I think that turnover, while it does require some effort is valuable. And, you know, maybe after a two-year break, someone could run for the board again or something like that. But in general, I think board turnover to some degree is a positive thing. Agree with the mayor, we shouldn't dictate meeting frequency. And I'm going to speak a bit about, I'm a big fan of governance boards and so a piece of that, it's a small thing maybe, but I prefer in terms of the board positions, chair and vice chair rather than president and vice president, which the latter seemed to me to be a bit more operational. So in terms of keeping that focused on a governance board, I, I thought those, those sorts of titles are preference for me, the chair and vice chair. So a small thing, but maybe it's worth being explicit that, that there's an expectation it's a governance board. And then following from that, we didn't, I haven't, I didn't see addressed the idea of inclusiveness and equity on the board. And I think that that sort of thing can be, you know, another criteria for, you know, someone from a housing society might also represent an equity deserving group and so on. So I, I think having some expectations around there is important. I personally am not of the opinion that your board should be your experts. I think the committee volunteers, consultants, and staff should be the experts. The, the board's expertise in my mind should be governance. And I, my fear is that when the board are the experts, I understand the desire to, to have that knowledge in the organization. But when the boards are the experts, I think it's inevitable that the executive director or CEO gets micromanaged because the board will always be the experts telling the CEO what to do. And in my opinion, for this to be successful, we'll probably need or want a rock star CEO or ED who has very clear outcomes they need to achieve with some clear limitations. But then they are free to sort of really drive that. And, and so if the board can provide that clear guidance and then the expertise can come from, you know, again, committees and so on. I think in my mind, that's a better path to success, but I'm not sure the rest of the room will agree with me on that. In terms of the constitution, I wondered about the climate crisis and equity mentioning those. And I think, you know, as we've seen the, the heat dome and those sorts of things, costs of energy and then dealing with floods and extreme weather and so on. I think that is something worthwhile mentioning in, in the, the constitution. When I, I do think it's also valuable because at the end of the day, we do want affordable homes for people. And so I think we, we do need, I think we could do with a less specificity, less detail in the constitution and, and more that, you know, we want 200 units under management within five years. That's our expectation, whatever it is. And that might not be the reasonable one, but setting that number. And even if we don't need it, it gives us that, that thing we can always test against and see, hey, do we need to change? Are we on track? Maybe do we need to change our expectation? But I think in communicating the setup, that number needs to be somewhere. And so it doesn't necessarily have to be new built units, but total units under membership or something. So we know ultimately what we're trying to achieve. And that probably doesn't belong in the constitution, but I think maybe in our fee-for-service agreement or funding agreement with, with the, the new society. And that also relates to my feeling about the McCullough Board Member Guide. Because as I see it right now, there's a lot of useful information in there. But I don't think we have an accountability mechanism. I don't even know that we want one. And so I guess I'm of two minds. If we expect this stuff in the board member guide to be deliverables, then that probably should be in a fee-for-service agreement or something. And I guess my preference would be to be very clear, this is, this is a lot of background work that we have done. And this is to help you out, but it is not a set of deliverables. And just to be very explicit when we share that with the organization. And I think those were most of my thoughts. So I'll pass it over to Counselor Herford now.
Thank you. I always have two minds when I was looking at the, the sort of deliverables or the, the, the goals and trying to figure out whether we have a, you know, explicit goals under, whether it's constructed or, or managed units. And as with many pieces of this, I think leaving it, leaving it open was, is appropriate. But I do think that somewhere there, there needs to be a stronger emphasis on the creation of, creation of new and soon. So I, and I'll leave that sort of as specifically vague as, as some of the other language. But I do think that that could be elevated overall. Earlier, I, I mentioned the financial expertise as a, as not being specifically called out, so I'll, I'm there. And I do think that the membership could be, as it's laid out, stands a chance of being skewed more towards the social side. I understand that sort of leaving that open or these are the eligible people. But I do think that we need to make sure we have, I don't know what else we need to put sort of fences around that so we can kind of really understand the makeup of that, of that board better. So I, it's an area of work. I don't have a suggestion on how to, how to sort of capture that. I support the meeting frequency. I'm just going through my, my list of notes, which may not be in any order in relation to the points up there. But sort of the minimum meeting frequency, I think, is worth calling out and that quarterly seems appropriate. And maybe we have some keeners that want to meet weekly and put, put shovels in the ground quickly. That's, I'm supportive of that. So I do like that, that minimum though, and giving them room to do that. And the unlimited terms piece made me think of sort of, I just want to make sure this doesn't turn into sort of a little, I want to make sure that we have room for the organization to evolve as, as the community does. So I don't know, maybe the terms could be unlimited, but the, but some limitations put around the being the chair or, or president or whatever language we, we lend on that so that that has, has some turnover. It might be a way to address that because if people are, have the expertise and are passionate in the field and want to commit the time, I have a hard time saying no to, to, you know, them, them doing that. But I want to make sure that we, that we have some opportunities for, for change in the organization sort of baked, baked in. So it's not, doesn't take a coup and, and so on, how these things can get, can get out of hand from, from time to time. So I'm not quite sure, again, how to address that piece specifically. But I think that there's just one more layer we could, we could add to that. And I, and earlier we were discussing the, we left the language quite open that could encompass rent or own. But I think it's worth highlighting that rent and own could be wherever explicit throughout the doc, throughout the documents, given that that's some of our, our stated goals, just so that the, the organization doesn't start skewing one, one way or the other without, without that direction. And then trying to think. Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Ace?
Thank you. So I want to go on record saying, yes, I do have a fax. I still remember the fax number, but it doubles as a scanner. So I am partly in the digital age. I'm sure you're all concerned about that. So when I looked at this thing, first of all, as you know, I used to practice law. I used to do a lot of this stuff actually for local groups at the firm would do it. So, but I have been away from the practice of law for now a few days over 13 years and the act has changed. And so I'm not giving legal advice, certainly, and we'll check that through our own council. But I did look at this as a former lawyer and so some of the, made some picky details. But the first thing was to consider, what is this society going to do? And, and when you talk about the membership structure, I think the two choices that we've talked about over the years is either it's in-house or not in-house. And I think with this, we have clearly settled, it is not in-house. And so I do think the membership structure has been crafted appropriately. We don't want to be burdened in our internal work with the debt structure of what a housing society might look like, like with mortgages on new construction and so forth. So I'm fine with the membership. And it also, I think, has the sort of the optics advantage of sort of taking it outside of city hall and being truly independent of city hall when we're only a 20% member, if you like. Directors, okay, I agree with the adding finance. I would consider limiting the terms. And we went through a discussion like this when we incorporated the community foundation a few years ago and limited the terms to, in that case, people were put on the board for three-year terms. And, and we just said you can't have any more than two consecutive terms. So they could, if they wanted to, step out for one or two years and then put their name forward again. But I think, oops. I think that that's an important feature because what you don't want is just to lock in a group and not have kind of the fresh blood coming through. So I would give consideration to that. The constitution, which, just so we're not confused, is just two pages. It's not all the other stuff. And the constitution generally sets out the purposes of the society. And it's an important document because if we try to undertake something that is not in the purposes, then we kind of go offside and that can affect financing and all kinds of other issues. So they are generally drafted in a broad sense. You're trying to think five, 10, 15, 20 years into the future. And while it is go, possible to go back and, you know, amend the constitution, sometimes it's cumbersome, sometimes time-consuming and can clutter up other things you're trying to do. So you try to avoid that. And typically you do draft it in a very broad sense. The other things, the goals and so forth are essentially just internal documents for the directors to consider. And the only comment I'll make about the constitution is in subparagraph D, to put the words authority to in there. So the society has authority to finance with combinations of program, service revenues, et cetera. And I say that because in the past, that has hung up a bank and, and other institutions that get very fussy if they're lending out money. They want to make sure that the society, the society has that authority to, to borrow and to, to do all of these things and raise money by certain means and fundraisers and whatever. So it's just, it's one of these things where you try to, to look ahead and anticipate problems. The bylaws, first of all, and I hadn't thought about it, but 5.5, which provides for all the meetings to be open. Typically in a society like this, it's really no different than the yacht club or curling club or anything like that. Directors' meetings are typically closed. So are shareholder meetings, member meetings. They are private meetings. And so when you put something in there like that, that says the meetings must be open, that can significantly compromise what the directors can do. And so I would think about that. I think really what I would suggest you do is just take that out and rely on the provisions of the Society's Act for any external, what has to be made public, if anything, and what has to be reported to the Register of Companies. And I also, what might be reported to CRA. And if you are going to have open meetings, then I think you want to be very clear about the ability to close them because I didn't see that. And so if the meeting has to be open, then you want to talk about a personnel issue or a land issue or a construction contract or something. How would you actually do that? Without, you know, just the same issues that we would actually run into in this room. So I think I'd think about that. The provision of 2.5, who is in good standing or not? A lot of the, the bylaws that I've seen said that you're not in good standing if, you know, if you hadn't paid dues, that's one example. And the other language around something like, or has not complied with any other provision of the bylaws. And so it leaves, and without going through line by line, there are certain things that members can and cannot do and have to live up to. So you can consider that. When you have voting and non-voting members, you have to be clear as you go through the bylaws that you sufficiently distinguish between them. And I looked, for example, at 3.24, which is where the chair, if the chair is a member, the chair can cast a vote. Well, really what the chair would have to be is not just a member. The chair would have to be a voting member. And also would, because all of the members are contemplated at the moment at least to be incorporated entities, including the district, but actually because the chair is a person, it's a people rather, as opposed to just an incorporated entity. And so people are authorized representatives of legal entities. And so you'd have to come, look at the language and make sure that you make that distinction. The final thing is paragraph 13.1 of the bylaws, which somebody already referred to, is what happens on winding up or dissolution. And when I considered this, this entity and going into the future, it struck me that it would probably, not certainly, but probably at some point want to incorporate or to be registered with CRA as a charity. And I say that because the constitution contemplates funding through gifting and a variety of other methods. But as soon as you talk about gifting and fundraising raising and stuff like that, you want to be a charity. This would not automatically become a charity. The fact that it's nonprofit doesn't give it the right to write tax receipts. So you would probably want to incorporate it as a charity through CRA at some point. And one of the things I used to see in practice when people brought me societies, they'd incorporate it and try to get CRA registration, is perhaps the most common thing that made the application bounce was that paragraph, what happens on winding up or dissolution. And CRA is extremely fussy about that. And this refers to qualified recipient under the act. But the act is defined as the Society's Act. It has to comply with the Income Tax Act. And the essential thing is that when you keep in mind that gifts are before tax dollars, taxes typically not been paid, and they get a receipt back. It's imperative, if the thing winds up, that the money somehow doesn't find itself into somebody's pocket at some point by a succession of winding ups and so forth and distribution to members. And trust me, CRA is very fussy about that. It's easier to put it in right now as opposed to come back later and have to amend the bylaws. So I would just check with council, because I think there is more specific wording around that. When you contemplate that this, this society applying for a registration or CRA about what could happen on a winding up. And it wouldn't refer to the Society's Act as much as it would refer to the Income Tax Act. And so I think, I think those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So just one comment. I vaguely recall from my last go through the B C Society's Act that you can no longer change your constitution, that at this point you have to dissolve the society and start a new one. I could be wrong, so it's worth checking. But I vaguely recall that was one of the changes in the new iteration of the act. So that might be worth checking on. I think, I have three questions I want to just test council on, and then maybe I'll put it to Mr. Buxton to clarify what he's heard and what more clarity he needs from us. So can I just get a show of hands? I think I heard people say they preferred a minimum of quarterly meetings from the board. Is there anyone who disagrees with that? Okay. Okay. So there's two sort of opposed. I guess I want to test, is there anyone opposed to open board meetings? Is that a question or opposition? Okay. So four opposed to open board meetings. Okay. And then there's a couple of comments about identifying somehow, somewhere, I guess, management stock targets. So number of houses built or managed or something along those lines is, is there anyone opposed to having that? Or I guess, trying to think of the right word. Friend, is, is this something people would like to see?
Yeah. If you're talking about the bylaws and the constitution, that's one thing. If you're talking about goals and so forth, that's another thing. From my perspective, it would not be appropriate in the bylaws or the constitution, the incorporation documents. And internal goals can change at each director's meeting. So.
Sorry, Mayor Elliott.
I agree. It doesn't belong in the bylaws of the constitution. And I think it would be very difficult at this point to select that number. But what, I mean, potentially what you could include is what we've already permitted and what, but even then, until we start signing these into, from CACs into the society, it has to exist first. So I, I would rather see the language in the goals around setting those objectives in the first year. That is the role of the executive director working with the board, rather than us imposing that. So, you know, council has its goals. We're going to review the CAC policy. So we're going to be trying to put more and more affordable housing into the mix that we can provide to the society. But I don't think it's for us to dictate to them. But I certainly think it's their job to identify that since we're providing their financing for the first five years on paper. I think that's reasonable.
Okay. So I think I'm seeing nodding heads there. So Mr. Buxton, I'll maybe put it to you to just summarize what else you heard or anything where you need some clarity.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. And with respect to open board meetings, I'm tempted to remove that provision. That advice has been given to me by other nonprofit housing operators. So I would be inclined to remove that. In terms of the meeting schedule, easy fix. I've heard in terms of the short and medium term goals being not specific around the number of units, but please have something perhaps shovel ready by five years and identified in year one. Move it along in year three, have it shovel ready by year five, something along that line. So there's a greater clarity about having new units in the pipeline within that first five year period. I heard that there's likely some tweaking on the board, on the director, membership makeup and having perhaps mortgage experience, financial banking experience. I'll revisit, I'll revisit that and maybe rebalancing that slightly. There is some language around core housing and in the constitution and probably in the board manual that needs reconciling, needs cleaning up. So the language is consistent between the two documents. I've cleaned it in one, but not in the other. So. And the only other question that I had is around, not question, but term limits for directors. All of the nonprofits that were sort of involved in this were clear that it's very difficult to recruit board members. And that they were, they were very strongly recommending having no term limit for that very reason. Now, could there be a term limit around the vice president and president? Yes. But all of the nonprofits were clear that it's difficult in small communities to, to get board members and directors. So there was the recommendation not to have term limits on, on that.
Okay, thank you. Go to Mayor Elliott.
So, one, I don't think people have to live in Squamish. And we can meet electronically as per the bylaws. And so I think term limits are healthy. And so if we're just thinking about recruiting locally, then I think that limits our pool. If we're looking for experts that live anywhere, then I don't think we've, we have to worry about that. Also, we have lots of new and talented people moving to town every year and people looking to get involved. So I still think term limits are important. And I didn't see anywhere in the bylaws that people actually have to live in Squamish to be on the board. And I know Whistler has people that don't live in Whistler on their board.
Counselor Herford?
Thank you. Maybe that the hybrid of, of having no more than two consecutive and then taking a break and coming back might, might be enough to sort of land in the middle here. I don't know if, how everyone else feels about that. But I, I, I like that piece where that hard to recruit piece. You know, it'd be nice to have the back after, after a period, after a period of time. And I do like the limiting of the, the time in the roles, regardless of where we, of where we land, even if it's, if for some reason we, we end up needing to go to the, the no term limit. I think that limiting the roles is important. But I like, I think that in between space of having to take at least a term out before you put your name forward again might allow room for enough turnover and on, on the board. But.
Okay. So just test that. Maybe, is there anyone opposed to consecutive term limits of some sort? So, you know, you can't serve more than two or three consecutive terms, for example. Is that sort of concept? Yeah, I wasn't going to get to the specifics, just the, the concept as a first step. Is there anyone opposed to the concept of limits on the number of consecutive terms? I'm not seeing opposition to that. Two consecutive terms as, as the limit. Is there anyone opposed to that? Counselor Ace.
How long is the term? Three years?
Yep.
Because I can see a scenario where there's a project and you want some continuity through a project. And so two times three, I'd be fine with that.
Okay. So it looks like we have some consensus there. Counselor Herford?
In this scenario, would the person need to wait out the next three years? Or is there a mid-cycle sort of, I think there, wasn't there a mix of, sorry, I didn't note it, but there was a mix that we weren't doing a whole board changeover at once. So would they have to wait out a three-year term or some shorter time?
So actually, if I can just interject, I, I think we are setting the initial bylaws. It would be within the power of the board to change term limits and so on. So the, the members can vote for new bylaws. Sorry, that's what I meant to say. So, you know, we, we can get to refining more details around this. But ultimately, the members are going to be able to change what we're discussing right now. So it's more about where we want to start, I think. And Mr. Buxton, do you want to add something?
And the answer to Counselor Herford's question would be anywhere between one and three years due to the staggered nature of the appointment. So it would be a minimum of one year between terms or between the consecutive terms. It, depending, it could be three if, if the rotations aren't working right for that individual member. So.
Okay, Mayor Elliott.
I just, one more comment. I'd like to kibosh the language as opportunities arise related to building housing. And I think a reference to climate-related goals to put somewhere in the board document. And I like that switch from president and vice president to chair and vice chair. Those are helpful additions. I, this has been a great report, though, and it's really exciting to see where we're at.
Okay, last call and better be a very good comment if you have a comment at this point. Okay. With that, we have, yeah, a, a motion to receive with the feedback as discussed. Counselor Anderson moves. Mayor Elliott seconds. Anyone opposed? No, motion pass, passes. Thank you, Mr. Buxton. And yeah, we will, are we able to start the next meeting a little bit late with the people coming? Like if we, 1:15? Pardon? Oh, sorry, the next, the next presentation. So if we start at 20 after, is that going to work?
My recommendation would be to take your lunch break, do the special meeting at two, and then defer this because we're an hour behind. If, if you try to do this on a shortened, this is, it's allocated an hour. You're going to run into the special, which, which you can't put off for more than 30 minutes, less than 30 minutes, really, or you'll lose your meeting.
Okay. So shall we recess then? And we will come back for the special meeting at two? Is that?
Sorry, that would be up to council. But if you want to give the amount of time that's allocated to this item and still start your meeting at two o'clock, your special meeting, which does have people, that would be my recommendation.
Mayor Elliott?
I think the wording you're looking for is recess to resume at following, recess to resume following special business meeting.
Okay. So I will ask for a motion to recess until following the special business meeting. Counselor French moves that. Counselor Herford seconds. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, welcome back, everyone. After some other meetings and technical difficulties and so on, we are back into the committee, the whole of Tuesday, November 9, 2021, to talk about proposed off-leash dog locations and owner responsibility conditions. And I will pass it off to Mr. Pageley, our acting GM of Community Services.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council and community of Squamish. Myself and Smasego will present to you the off-leash dog and owner responsibility conditions and information that we received through extensive public engagement over the last few weeks. I will now turn it over to Ms. Smasego to walk us through the PowerPoint.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Yes. So I'll, thank you and welcome. Nice to see the chair and council today. I'll be presenting on the off-leash dogs and owner responsibility conditions. I'll be reviewing the project goals and the approach, the information about the project, its timeline, what we heard from the community and considerations for council today. Go to the next slide. The project is based on three goals. It was very much seeking to ensure harmony and safety across the community for dogs and dog. The project is based on three goals. It was, um, very much seeking to ensure harmony and safety across the community for dogs and dog owners and those that do not own dogs. It also was very much wanting to ensure safety and respect for wildlife and the environment, and also to work within resources in the community and the district resources. There's the next slide. The project also seeks a new philosophy to, that we're seeking the district and the community to embrace. It's, um, recognizing that dogs are part of the community and that as part of the community, it's, um, important to ensure dogs can be, um, healthy and safe and responsible, and giving them some off-leash time as part of that health and well-being of a dog. And this is representing or, um, feeding into a new culture shift towards owner responsibility and away from a focus solely on animal control. One where the community and the owners are, um, ensuring their dogs are well behaved and that can be part of the community. In addition, the project is bringing a new designated use and also is ensuring to build awareness through signage and communication so that people can know what to expect when they get into designated off-leash areas. Next slide. The approach that we're taking is, um, based on a rationale of seeing more dogs being licensed. Over the last five years, there's been a 40% increase in dog licenses. And with this, the project is seeking to set itself, um, in a, in a, an approach of piloting. We're wanting to test some sites for a year, monitor what's working, uh, work with, um, bylaws will be speaking to users of these areas, whether they're dog owners or not, and seeking to make improvements over time. And what we're presenting today is not the end of the story for off-leash dogs. We very much hope that, um, with, um, success of following owner responsibility conditions, that we may see more off-leash sites in the future. The next slide. This is a bit of a background timeline. We started in 2019 with an initial list. In 2020, and the pandemic slowed and changed priorities for bylaw staff. Earlier this year, from May to August, staff underwent, uh, undertook, um, internal and also external agency review. In June, June, earlier this year, council received a progress update from, from staff. And more recently, from August to September, we refined the original list, uh, particularly to remove, um, uh, sensitive spawning habitat. So if we go to the next slide, it's a continuation of the project timeline. With the refined list, we then went, uh, forward to public, during September and October to collect feedback on these new pilot locations. So we conducted an online survey, but we also did online or in-person outreach, uh, out in the community. We, in addition to traditional media, we also attended dog parks and community events where we surveyed people. We reached out to individuals and businesses by handing them out information. We distributed emails as well to community groups. And in addition, staff placed signage at each of the proposed pilot locations to build awareness about the site possibly being an off-leash location and directing people to the survey. We'll go to the next slide. So the here's what we part, go to the next slide. We had 860 individuals provide comments, which represents, um, survey respondents and email responses. And we also had online comments. In the survey, we had an 80% completion rate. And all in all, this provides very useful data for the council considerations today. Next slide. So based on all the feedback, the following are the council considerations for today. We'll go to the next slide. In terms of the owner responsibility conditions, we asked what people thought of, uh, the conditions, whether they would be, uh, considered safe and enjoyable for off-leash dog locations. And 70% of the respondents surveyed said it greatly improved. And the next slide. This slide now talks about the dog, uh, off-leash locations. And it's supported through the feedback. We have four areas and we have our three areas and one trail. So John Hunter Park was, um, was strongly supported, either being some partially fenced or all fenced. Merrill Park was another area that we're proposing for today. Brennan Park being a fenced dog run as, and a part of the future master planning process. And the key trail that was, um, supported and is being proposed today is the Powerline Service Road in Brackendale, which, um, which is a high, yeah, it's a BC hydro right-of-way that, um, we're working on getting, actually we're in the process of getting, uh, a right-of-way service agreement. Yeah. Go to the next slide. Believe that's is now where we are seeking council endorsement of, um, the districts, uh, at the District of Squamish endorse the proposed off-leash locations and implementation strategy as outlined in the report from Community Services dated November 9, 2021. And the next slide. Seeking feedback and questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I will look to council now if there are any questions. Oh, okay. Thinking about it.
Shall I start my video, see if it works okay with the bandwidth? You can let me know.
Yeah, it's right on the edge. We can mostly make it out, but but we're just, uh, a couple of people are just confirming their I was referring to their notes for questions. So I think there are some questions coming.
So I'll go to Mayor Elliott.
So we had, um, there were 108 people representing almost 15% who chose that they were unlikely to use any of the proposed off-leash locations. And then we haven't decided to move forward with all of them. So how I guess what I'm concerned about is that, um, by taking some of them out of the mix, do we have less distribution across the neighborhoods? And so we'll have difficulty with compliance.
Uh, Ms. Smasego?
Yes, through the chair. Uh, thank you, Mayor. That's a good question. I'm trying to understand if, yeah, kind of see if I understand it. So I'm, so you're suggesting that, um, yeah, the question is whether we have broad, we still have that broad, um, mix across the community, whether there's a balance across the community of the locations. And whether that might in, in compliance. Well,
That's correct.
Yes, thank you. Great. Well, it, on one hand, we sought, um, as you can see on the one slide, we sought to have a place in Valley Cliff. So we've moved in Brackendale and up in the Geribaldi Highlands and down at Brennan Park. And, um, in essence, we did see this very much being a project starting as a pilot project. So we're trying to ensure success. Start with the easier ones first. Get success from the community, show that we can have great, well-behaved dogs, owner responsibility conditions being complied with. And today is not the end of the story. We really hope that, um, with a year of testing and monitoring, that bylaws can report, um, in internally to say this is working and we can get more sites in the future as part of a future network.
So is it easier now to focus enforcement? Where people are everywhere else, where people are not supposed to be walking off-leash? Or are we putting bylaw officers in the off-leash areas to make sure people are being responsible dog owners?
Through the chair. Thank you, um, Mayor. That's a very good question. The, it's, it's kind of a multi-pronged approach. First of all, enforcement staff will continue doing the work they do. They already actually do go out and, and talk and focus on education first and ticketing second. That will happen. In particular, because this is a whole new project approach for the community, that, that there'll be some focus on these pilot sites where bylaw staff will frequent them. And the ones we've chosen are the ones that can, they can easily get to. It can be implemented in, um, through staff amenities. And therefore, we, again, we want to, um, build success even with the bylaw staff team doing their work.
And we talk a lot about the, um, owner's responsibility for the off-leash areas. But given that 15% of survey respondents aren't going to use these areas, shouldn't we be focusing our messaging everywhere, given that we're still going to have a lot of people walking their dogs off-leash? Not in approved areas?
Yes, through the chair. Uh, Mayor, that's a very good point. And in fact, um, I may not have embellished it in the presentation today, but, uh, communication and education is going to be an important part of the project generally. And definitely the, the offshoot of that would be to, uh, discuss activities and actions from side of the off-leash areas.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Councilor Hartford now.
Thank you. Um, as I went through the report, the, the survey, uh, responses were, um, plentiful. I found very useful. But one of the things that jumped out at me is just sort of being stated and felt significant, but just sort of hanging there, was that most of the respondents to survey, 82%, were dog owners. And, um, it makes me think about the other users of these proposed spaces and the other im- impacts, um, to the rest of the community and the impacts or even opinions of the rest of the community. Just, it, it doesn't seem to be, to me, this piece seems a bit, um, a bit lacking. It, what were staff's thoughts when they saw that 82%, 82% were dog owners? And how that informed the rest of the policy going forward?
Uh, Ms. Smasego?
Thank you. Yes. Uh, thank you. Through the chair, uh, Council Hartford. That's good that you, you did hone in on an important piece. We did discuss that and you know, when we did the outreach, you, you find dog owners coming more likely towards you to speak. And we did definitely speak to some that were not dog owners. And those that, um, that didn't, um, partake in the survey or, yeah, basically those that don't own dogs. The fact that we actually had quite a bit of, um, I wouldn't say negative feedback, but we had very critical, important, critical feedback that influenced, um, the decisions and our, our suggestions. It means that those that are dog owners actually were considering all sides. We had considerations, um, of all kinds that, um, that relate to impacts to community, to environment, wildlife, to children and elders. And that was taken into consideration, um, for these sites, these pilot sites. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah. Oh. I'll wait to hear what Mr. Page has to say if that's a good turn.
Yeah, I'll go to Mr. Pageley and then back to Councilor Hartford.
Okay, through the chair. Thank you, uh, Councilor Hartford. The, the reality is the areas that we are currently proposing, uh, activities cohabitate amongst those various sites already. Where we have non-user, non-dog owners and dog owners alike, uh, participating in some of those parks. The goal of these, this project is to ensure that we already have something happening, that we can try to bring some sort of, uh, I guess, structure to, and behavior with the animals that are in those areas, uh, and provide a tool around dog owner behaviors and give assurances to those non-dog owners that, that we have a program in place to try to support cohabitation in those particular areas where they both cross each other's paths.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Um, I'm curious about the, um, the piece in, in Brackenale, for instance. I've spent quite a bit of time in that proposed area. And one of the things that happens, uh, from time to time, as I pass through there is, um, a group of, uh, students, I don't know if they're, uh, if they're just on a gym class or if it's a cross-country running group or, or something, but from Don Ross, I think one of the benefits of that school is that it is in kind of in the middle of some areas that can be used to have an extensive run through the PE class or, um, the maybe cross-country running team or, or something. And were they, was the school board, and maybe that's the same in other areas. I'm just curious if the schools were contacted as, as, as part of this, um, given that they generally put through rather large groups of, uh, of, of kids through these spaces, or at least that space.
Ms. Smasego?
Yes, yes, thank you. Through the chair, uh, Councilor, that's a very good point. We did not reach out to the school board. Uh, we definitely talked to families that had children and they were, they were part of the survey process, but that's a good point as a key stakeholder. That we did not reach out to them.
Um, okay, given, given that they weren't, I'm just curious how we, um, I'd be curious to learn how we close the loop on that so that we don't negatively impact that, uh, that current use in that zone.
And, um, actually, so it's good that you bring this up because part of the whole test approach to the off-leash locations is to continue doing research. Uh, we obviously had some other sites that didn't go forward and we tend to do, continue doing research on those sites and potentially future ones. So in doing that, we're able to, um, include stakeholders that we may have missed in this round to close that loop.
Okay, council, any further questions? Uh, okay, maybe does someone want to move the, uh, move the resolution? Then we'll hear some comments. And that, that motion is to endorse the proposed, uh, locations and implement, implementation strategy. Uh, and possibly provide feedback. Council race moves. Council French seconds. Any thoughts, Council race?
Thank you. No, I think this is a good start. I mean, I, this is going to be, um, I think a learning process for all of us. Uh, and I think pilot projects and I agree with the selection of proposed sites versus not proposed. With the sites that I am familiar with certainly. And so I think this is a good start and I think it'll just be a matter of seeing how the pilot projects work and we'll see where it takes us, uh, in a few months or a year from now.
Uh, Council French?
Yeah, I see this as, um, a program that will evolve over time. It's, uh, the kind of thing that needs to be monitored. And I have faith that that, uh, that will happen. And, uh, this starting point, um, is, is a little overdue. It's taken us a little longer than we anticipated to get to where we are. Nonetheless, some great staff work has gone into this and some great community participation has also, um, taken place. So I support the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott.
I'd like to propose an amendment that the motion list the proposed off-leash dog locations.
Is there a second for that? Uh, Council race seconds?
Can I speak to it? Um, so it doesn't stand out in the staff report which locations we're talking about clearly. And I think motions so that they have historical context and are easy to understand and we know what we're agreeing to should have the list of parks in the motion. And I am like flipping through the staff report. And it's, you have to read into the column, not recommended at this time, not recommended at this time, not recommended at this time. So I would suggest that, uh, staff read out the list to be included in the motion.
Councilor French?
Yeah, I support this amendment. Uh, it will bring clarity to, um, what's happening. And, uh, I think that, uh, this is, this is a good addition. And, uh, will help people better understand exactly where they can take their dogs for off-leash activity.
Okay. So on the amendment to include the list of locations, is there anyone opposed?
Can we get staff to read out the locations, please?
Uh, sure. Please, uh, staff, if, uh, someone from staff, um, maybe Ms. Smasego, can you, uh, read out the list of locations?
The locations are John Hunter Park in Valley Cliff, Merrill Park in the Geribaldi Highlands, Brennan Park in the Geribaldi Estates, and the Powerline Service Road in Brackendale.
Uh, Council race?
Yeah, just for clarity, it's, it's, the one I was moving was Brennan Park fenced area as opposed to Brennan Park Nature Trail, which was not recommended.
Is that consistent with, uh, the list, uh, your list, Ms. Smasego?
Uh, that site was not, is not part of this list currently and is part of the research list that I mentioned earlier.
So I think then the motion on the floor does not include Brennan Park. It is the list that Ms. Smasego, maybe Ms. Smasego, if I can get you to repeat that list one more time, just so we're clear.
Thank you. I realize I left. Thank you, I realize I left out an important piece. So the John Hunter Park in Valley Cliff, Merrill Park in the Geribaldi Highlands, Brennan Park fenced dog run in the Geribaldi Estates and the Powerline Service Road in Brackendale.
Okay, so thank you for that clarity. So with that clarity, is there anyone opposed to the amendment? So not seeing any opposition, the amendment is adopted and we are on the main motion for comments. Mayor Elliott?
I'm not going to support the motion. I think for a pilot project to be successful, it should have covered all areas. There is no place downtown. And we have lots of new residents downtown. There is no place in proximity to Dentville, North Yards and very limited options in Brackendale. And so I think we're going to have more trouble enforcing this than we would otherwise if we had figured out pilot projects for each of our major neighborhoods. So I think this encourages people to, to drive, which is the opposite of what I want. I don't want people getting in their cars to walk their dog. That just seems like a climate disaster contribution. I think people should be able to walk from their front door. I think we, you know, I realize that timed times of day doesn't work for everyone, but it works for a lot of people. And a lot of people walk their dogs before they go to work and they walk their dogs when they get home from work or when young people get home from school. And so while I think we should have designated areas to run a dog off-leash, I think we also should have had times of day in all of our major neighborhoods where there was at least a place for someone to go out and do a half hour run with their dog or bike with their dog. And I don't see that. So I don't think this is as common sense, common sense approach as I would have liked. And I just think without covering some of our major neighborhoods in the pilot, it's not going to get us where we need to go after such a long delay. So I won't support it.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I would like to support Mayor Elliott's concern or a particular concern that she has highlighted. And that is the, that we have not addressed downtown. And I'm not a dog owner, but I, in interacting conversations with downtown dog owners, I feel that this is a particularly important oversight that we need to address. I am, however, overall impressed with the research and with the survey exercise. And I'm relieved at the considerations made with the ones that were not selected, which are, well, for, for different reasons. One close to my area is one that is very popular for walkers and in particular seniors walkers. But having said that, I think that the, I'd like to sort of go on record, if you'd like, as suggesting that the downtown, missing the downtown area is, is a significant oversight. Thank you, so I will not be supporting the recommendation.
Counselor Herford?
Thank you. I do acknowledge staff's considerable work on this and trying to find a starting point for us for these off, for these off-leash locations. I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the, that issue that I stated earlier where it's 80 some odd percent of the respondents to our, to our surveys were dog owners and we were relying on their ability to look at things from a different user groups point of view. And, and I don't think in any other work that we've, we've done, we'd, we'd accept the cyclist's point of view for the hikers or vice versa. And I see a similar piece here. So I'm not too sure how to close that loop. I was hearing the comments around this. I, I was, yeah, I was leaning towards supporting this as a, as a starting point, knowing that it's not fully fleshed out, but I, I don't, I'm not comfortable committing these, these spaces quite yet, given that they're going to be for someone that wants to follow, to be a responsible owner and to follow all the, the rules of the, of the day. These places are going to, would become destinations and, and which makes it harder to, to really gauge their, the impact and whether it's an appropriate use. So I think we have more work to do here. And I also found that the budget considerations here were quite modest. And I don't think we're realistic for, to actually achieve our goals. The only budget piece that was mentioned was the, was the future Brennan Park Dog Run. But we have other proposed locations that may require more than just the waste bins and dog bag dispensers as outlined. Even in the, the report, there was some mention of, of fencing partial or complete and so on in other locations. And I don't think that was accounted for. So I don't think we're, we're, I think we're moving in the right direction, but I don't think we're, we're all the way there to, to sort of kick this into motion at this point without understanding maybe some future phasing or I, I think there's more to do before we set down this, this path. So I won't be supporting this time.
Okay, thank you. I guess trying to decide where I am on this, I, I, as I read through the report, what I saw were very contradictory perspectives in the community, but legitimate on both sides. And, and so we have people that just have conflicting philosophies on how space can or should be used that somehow need to share that space. And so I think that is, is the challenge. And, and I think that's going to take some experimentation for us and I'm sure we don't have it right yet. So I'm eager to see how our community actually moves forward with these things. And I do appreciate that, you know, we just had the presentation on some of our waste bylaw changes and enforcement. And we are very much focused on education first, which I appreciate. And so from that perspective, I'm also comfortable moving forward. But we, ultimately, we will still be telling people downtown and other areas that we don't have a solution yet. And at this point, our direction would be to educate them that they are not doing the right thing. But I agree with the mayor that, you know, asking people or expecting them to get into their cars is not where we want to go. And I think there is an equity piece in terms of who has access to a dog park and so on. On the flip side of that, space is a challenge too. And so there are problems that I'm not really sure how to resolve. I, I guess I, I guess what that leaves me, to be honest, is to support this with a real focus on the pilot aspect of this. And, you know, when just riding into the council meeting today, I ran across, I think, three different people with dogs off-leash and there was no interaction problems. But, you know, I think there's a lot of work to do in terms of getting dogs on leash or off-leash in the right or wrong areas. And so taking a step, I think, is worthwhile, recognizing there's still a lot of conversations and adjustments to be had. Again, that's not a perfect path through all of this, but I think it's maybe the best one available at this point. So I think I've talked myself into supporting this resolution for now. And that's how I will be voting. So there any more comments? Mayor Elliott?
Chair, I don't know if you noticed, but there are at least three people voting against this motion, which will kill it. Which is fine if that's the will of council, but I'm going to propose an amendment.
Please do.
That the District of Squamish endorsed the proposed off-leash dog locations and implementation strategy as outlined in the report from Community Services dated November 9th and that staff begin engagement on a downtown location to use as an off-leash dog park.
Is there a second for that? Counselor Anderson, would you like to speak to that, Mayor Elliott?
Yeah, I, I'm not really going to support my motion, but I'm trying to get one more counselor over the line so that some of this can move forward. Quite frankly, I think we need to do something. I don't think this is it. I think the most glaring miss is downtown, where we have so many issues with people walking their dogs off-leash in the estuary. And that really, really, really needs to stop. And so for me, in the short term, while we pilot all these other areas and see people, see people ignoring them or driving there or whatever, I'm going to close my eyes to that. But downtown is the biggest miss if we want to avoid the issues that we've been having in the estuary. So that's why I put the motion forward. I'm hoping my colleague will support it.
So any comments on the amendment, proposed amendment? Okay, seeing none. Anyone opposed to the amendment to the motion, which is to, for staff to continue pursuing a downtown location? So Mayor Elliott opposes the amendment to pursue? Okay. Okay, so Mayor Elliott opposes. With that, the amendment succeeds. So back to the main motion, which now has an inclusion that staff pursue, continue to pursue a downtown location and that the list in the report be included. Any more comments on the main motion as amendment amended? Seeing none? Anyone opposed to the main motion as amended? Mayor Elliott and Counselor Herford oppose. Motion carries. I think, yes, I think we got that one. All right, thank you. And I believe that is it. So thank you very much, Ms. Pasego, for the report. A lot of work. I know a lot of people are eager, there's a lot of comments that people are eager to see something move, moving forward. And I think we have something moving forward. So hopefully in the end, that's a good thing. So thank you very much for your time and the report. I will request a motion to terminate. Mayor Elliott, Counselor French? And motion is accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.